Okay, we'll start her up in thirty seconds, thirty seconds. Colored order of a regular meeting in the Goodyear City Council, twenty-sixth March, two thousand and seven, like to start with Vice Mayor Cavalier, leading in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge to allegiance is to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing if you wish. Heavenly Father, please help us, council, to make the decisions, the best decisions we can, to serve our community in the best manner we know, so that we can bring to them a better and higher quality of life. Protect our fire department members and our police department members as they go about their duty. Bring home our servicemen and servicewomen safe to their families. We ask this in your name. Amen.
All council members are in attendance today. We do have a monthly financial report by Larry Lang. No action is necessary to be taken. Any comments on the report? Seeing none, we'll move to Communications, and the city manager would like to make a comment.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I have the privilege of doing something that has long been due, and I would ask at this time both Brian Dahlke and Mayor Kavanagh, if you'll please join me. Brian, first of all, you have made many presentations to the city council concerning the spring training, and always have thanked everyone on the team for their contributions and their efforts. We think it's high time that you are now thanked, since you have been the key staff member, leading the charge, to bring the Indians in spring training to Goodyear. Paula. Likewise, Mayor, at several receptions and meetings concerning spring training and the Indians, we have seen you thank the staff and consultants and everyone else who has worked on bringing the Indians in the stadium complex to Goodyear, but we don't think that you, as the main person, they hit the homerun for us. Have ever properly thanked you for your leadership and the hands-on contribution in bringing the Indians and spring training to Goodyear. Paula. Mayor and Brian, please accept these baths inscribed with the Indians and the Goodyear logos that say, "Our heartfelt thanks for all of your hard work and perseverance in bringing baseball to Goodyear." Thank you.
Paul will take them. From both Brian and me, a sincere thank you to city manager, the staff, and the council for this, it's very thoughtful of all of you. Thank you very much. Opportunity now for comments from the public, for any subject that is not on this evening's agenda. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move to consent agenda, and I'll ask the city clerk to read consent items A through T, with the exception of E and O, which are being continued. Okay?
Item A, one, council will consider approving draft minutes of special meeting held on March 5th, March 8th, and February 26th, two thousand and seven. Item B, council will consider for possible action approving a request from Bruno Doca, representing Bruno's Pizza and Restaurant, Inc., for a Series 12 liquor license for Bruno's Pizza Restaurant, to be located at 14130 West Indian School Road. This is generally located on the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Litchfield Road. C, council will consider approving a request from Terra Rossis, representing Ground Control LLC, for a Series 7 liquor license for Ground Control, be located at 14140 West Indian School Road, generally located on the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Litchfield Road. Item D, council will consider accepting the dedication of rights away for portions of Camelback, Citrus, Perryville, and Indian School Roads along the Sedea subdivision property, Pranich. Item F, council will consider ratifying amendment to Section 2E Quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission Rules of Procedure, to allow commission members to participate in meetings and work sessions through teleconferencing. Number two, council will consider ratifying an amendment to Section 3A Meeting Procedure of the Planning and Zoning Commission Rules of Procedure, to provide for commission member disclosure of ex parte communications prior to any public meeting. Item G, council will consider adopting Resolution 071133, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Goodyear, the City of Avondale, and the town of Buckeye regarding the funding of the Southwest Valley Advocacy Center. H, council will consider approving the implementation of the Historic Goodyear Facade Improvement Program, Grant Program. I, council will consider approving the final plan for La Jolla Vista Master Plan, subdividing one hundred and fifty-seven point two acres into eight parcels within the La Jolla Vista Planned Area Development, located at the northeast corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road, subject to stipulations. Item J, council will consider approving the final plan for La Jolla Vista Parcel 1, subdividing twenty-six point six acres into ninety single-family lots, generally located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Durangle Street, within the La Jolla Vista Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. K, council will consider approving the final plan for La Jolla Vista Parcel 2, subdividing twenty-four point one acres into seventy-eight single-family lots, generally located at the southwest corner of Durangle Street and the Hundred Seventy-Fifth Avenue alignment, within the La Jolla Vista Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item L, council will consider approving the final plan for La Jolla Vista Parcel 3, subdividing twenty-three point five acres into ninety single-family lots, generally located northeast of the northeast corner of Citrus Road and Lower Buckeye Road, within the La Jolla Vista Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item M, council will consider approving the final plan for La Jolla Vista Parcel 5, subdividing twenty-nine acres into one hundred and twenty-four single-family lots, generally located at the northwest corner of Lower Buckeye Road and Hundred Seventy-Fifth Avenue, within the La Jolla Vista Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item N, council will consider awarding a professional services contract in the amount of one hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-six cents to LEA Architects LLC, to prepare a public facility safety training master plan. Item O, item P, council will consider approving the map of dedication for West Commerce Drive between Cotton Lane and Cerebral Avenue, within the Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park. Q, council will consider approving a preliminary plan for the Gate Airport Gateway Business Center, subdividing twenty-five acres into ten industrial lots, generally located on the west side of Litchfield Road, approximately one thousand four hundred feet north of Yuma Road, subject to stipulations. R, council will consider authorizing staff to enter into a contract with HOK Support for Professional Services for the Design and Construction Administration of the Goodyear Sports and Recreation Campus, in the amount of three million dollars. Item S, council will adopt Resolution 071137, supporting the Arizona Department of Transportation and its efforts to quickly identify the alignment of the proposed state route 801, SR 801, and urging adopt to select the southernmost proposed alignment of SR 801 through the City of Avondale. The southernmost alignment runs along the northern banks of the Gila River, south of the Broadway Road alignment, and north of the Gila River. T, council will consider adopting Resolution 071136, declaring the results and adopting certificates of election for Rob Antoniak, Joanna H. Osborne, and Richard Dick A. Sousa of the primary election held on March 13th, two thousand and seven, and ordering the recordation of such certificate.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yeah, S is in Sam. I'll be recusing myself from that item.
Okay, then, could I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through T, with the exception of E, O, and S?
One more, second.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Could we have a roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak reclusive?
No, no. I vote aye on the consent. I'll step away from the debate.
Okay. Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanagh?
Aye.
Pass six zero.
Okay, we'll now move to seven S, resolution to support the southernmost alignment of the proposed state route 801. Any discussion on that one? Okay, could I have a motion, please, to approve that?
I'm going to re-adopt the resolution as read by the city clerk, S.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Lord, and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier, relative to approving S on the agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanagh?
Aye.
Pass five zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to the business part of our agenda, and I will now ask Lori Hill of Rams if she would come forward, and we're going to consider appointing Joanne Osborne to fill the vacant position created by Councilmember Fred Scott's resignation. Lori?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to present the first item on business tonight. As you know, Councilmember Scott's resignation created a vacancy on the council. Mayor Kavanagh appointed a subcommittee to consider filling that vacancy. The subcommittee included Vice Mayor Cavalier, Councilmember Dick Sousa, and Councilmember Rob Antoniak. The subcommittee met last week and considered five applications. The subcommittee expressed deep appreciation to all the applicants, and was impressed by each of them. From those five applicants, the subcommittee recommends the appointment of Joanne Osborne, and I would now like to ask Joanne to come forward, so I may introduce her. Joanne has lived in Goodyear for nearly ten years. She has served on the Planning and Zoning Commission for six years. She has also served on the Board of the Y and the Southwest Valley Chamber, and most impressive to me, she's the mother of four kids, and some of them are teenagers. So we welcome her, and the subcommittee recommends her appointment.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that council appoint Joanne Osborne to fill the vacant position created by Councilmember Fred Scott's resignation, effective March 26th, two thousand and seven.
Second motion. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Holland. Any discussion on that subject? Okay, could I have a call for a vote, please? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it, six zero, and the city clerk shall now administer the oath of office.
Joanne, would you come forward, please? Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, Joanne.
Aye, Joanne Osborne.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and the laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, whatever.
And defend them against all enemies, whatever.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of...
And I will faithfully and...
Impartially.
Impartially.
Discharge the duties of...
Discharge the duties of...
Same place you have. Councilmember?
Councilmember.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, I present your new councilmember, Joanne Osborne.
Thank you. It's ironic, I think I started here six years ago in PZ. I can move up.
Okay, we'll now move to hear a report on the Goodyear Skate Park, Brian Barnes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I'm Brian Barnes, Public Works Superintendent for the City of Goodyear. As requested, I am here to present an update of the operation of the skate park. I should like to let you know the staff from Public Works, the legal department, risk management, police, fire, and administration have all been involved or have assisted in reviewing the management and operations of this facility. The skate park is currently a commingled use. Bikes are allowed to use the park without pegs. The no-peg rule was adopted on February 16th, after the majority of users were failing to adhere to the protected pegs, pedals, and handbars rules. Since the grand opening of this facility, staff has had ongoing concerns regarding these issues. Staff has been spending seven to ten hours per day cleaning the park, has witnessed numerous rules violations, has been the recipients of abusive language for the enforcement of rules, has received several emails, phone calls, and letters from skateboarders or parents of skateboarders indicating they would not use the facility due to safety concerns, has found evidence of drug use and other inappropriate behavior in the facility, has closed the park on three occasions for maintenance of the coping, including painting of the epoxy limestone coping three times, repairing concrete gouges twice, and grinding the steel coping once. We have scheduled two additional closure days in April to address ongoing maintenance issues. However, we would like to acknowledge the efforts of some of the bike users in assisting in the cleanup of litter at the end of each day. The cost of addressing these issues has increased from our projected annual cost of general maintenance and coping repairs, from thirty-one thousand dollars annually to a hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars annually. This includes the expected annual replacement of limestone coping, but the unexpected replacement of a hundred feet of steel coping annually, and twelve park closures for unexpected concrete repairs. The impact is in dollars and in staff time. In January, we surveyed over a hundred and twenty-five similar facilities in several southwestern states on a variety of maintenance and management issues. Fifty-eight of those surveys, survey respondents responded to us. At this time, we are recommending an approach that will allow different management options to be implemented over a period of time. If one option does not succeed, the next phase would be implemented. One or more of these options could end up being implemented concurrently. If we find an option or combination of options that works, we would not move forward with Phase one includes two facility changes that are in progress right now. The first is the installation of a camera surveillance system at the cost of fifteen thousand dollars. This will be a multiple camera system that will record activities in the park to a DVR for historical review. It will not be monitored on a minute-by-minute basis. This system will be operational by May 15th. The existing fencing will be increased in height by three feet to improve security. This improvement is being completed at a cost of forty thousand dollars, and will be operational by May 15th. Many of the issues that staff has concerns about are most prevalent during the evening hours. Since its opening, there have been a hundred and twenty-nine police calls. This represents two hundred and three officer responses, including four instances where the entire police force has responded, and has resulted in seven arrests of a variety of violations. There have been fourteen fire calls. Fire calls have typically involved serious injury, mostly head or facial trauma. One call was to respond to a fire in the restroom. Staffing this facility full-time should reduce the number of these calls. Phase one includes the implementation of a rec-leader skate park program. This program would be similar to lifeguards at an aquatic or pool facility. Three rec-leader or guards would staff the facility to monitor activities at all times that the facility is open. These guards would be part-time recreation leaders, assigned inside the park to monitor and supervise. These recreation leaders would be selected with knowledge and background in skateboarding and biking. We are moving forward with implementing this staffing now. We are reviewing existing division budgets within Public Works to fund these part-time positions. Fifteen to thirty part-time positions will be hired to cover the entire time that this facility is open. The program will be operational by April 15th. We would request that recreation part-time staff budget in fiscal year 0708 be increased by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to maintain this program. With this new staffing level, rules on equipment would be strictly and uniformly enforced. The rules on personal safety equipment and apparel, such as helmets and pads, would be changed from being recommended to be required and will be enforced. Any new rules that may be deemed necessary to promote safety will be added and enforced. We have begun discussions with the legal department, city prosecutor's office, and the police department, in implementing a zone around this facility, similar to school zones, where fines for violation would be double or triple. An additional option would be to establish a park ranger program. Park rangers would not be permanently stationed within the skate park, but would roam throughout the park system while focusing on this facility, and would be available to enforce rules, cite violators, and ensure security for park users in all city parks. Several other municipalities surveyed have implemented this program. Rangers would have citation authority and would provide an additional level of support for rec-leaders before full-time police would be needed to be called in. These rangers would use police vehicles that have been rotated out of PD service. Four full-time rangers could be utilized to begin this program at a cost of two hundred thousand dollars. Phase one also includes continuing our survey and analysis of the skate park use. There is a new development regarding our liability concerns. Dean Kokenhour, our risk manager, attended a meeting of the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool on Friday. Our insurance carrier is concerned that because our park was specifically designed for skateboards and not BMX, that our recreational immunity, should there be a claim, could be in jeopardy. The insurance carrier stated that the city could be deemed to be grossly negligent, and as such punitive damages could rise to over ten million dollars. The insurance pool board members expressed concern, and it was suggested that the pool may wish to consider limiting coverage or eliminating coverage for skate parks that allow BMX, that were not designed for BMX. It's important to note that we continue to be insured today. As of today, we have not had any claims reported to risk management relating to the skate park. It is clear that our insurance carrier intends to review the insurance exposure of skate parks that allow BMX in the near future. Dean Kokenhour is available to discuss in further detail if council has questions regarding this issue, and we are ready to implement in any decision that is made by the Risk Retention Pool Board that would apply to us. Phase two, which we had intended to pursue incrementally, includes options such as separate sessions, the elimination of a user group, and building a separate BMX facility. Funding for a similar facility is incorporated into our CIP, and sites, and several sites are available for consideration in locating this facility. These options would remain pending as we await any decision of the Risk Retention Pool, and we continue our survey and analysis of operations. A paid-for-use system could be implemented to recover the costs outlined previously. This cost recovery system could implement a single-entry turnstile gate with an electronic smart card. The cost to implement these two features would be approximately fifty-eight thousand dollars. The electronic entry card would be available through the recreation officers and offered on a tiered rate structure. The card would be available at little or no cost to Goodyear residents, with non-residents paying a higher rate, and out-of-state residents paying the highest rate. The card could be offered either on a pay-per-entry system, or on a time-period pass, such as a daily, weekly, monthly, or weekend pass. The smart card would allow staff to revoke entry privileges for rules violations, trespass, or inappropriate behavior, in addition to possible citations by the park rangers or police for those violations. The software for this type of card allows us to use a variety of program options, which would be created to address specific uses, i.e. it could prevent reentry without an exit, it could prevent reentry for one or two hours after somebody used it initially to entry, and the card would be required to be visible at all times while the user is in the park. In review, staff is requesting council to approve increasing part-time recreation staff budget by two hundred and twenty-five thousand in fiscal year 0708, for part-time staff for security and oversight, and to provide direction on the recommended phasing of operational options. I am available to answer questions, as is Dean Kokenhour and other members of staff.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Dean, you're standing by, I understand. Any other comments from staff? Any other comments from staff?
Can he just humor us and read like the last four sentences he's just talked about the fiscal impact?
Yes, sir. Again. I'd like to repeat your last sentence or two, is that right?
He talked about the fiscal impact, what you were requesting, can you state that again?
We are requesting that in fiscal year 07-08, that the line item budget for part-time staff for recreation be increased by $225,000. That is the total annual cost for maintaining full-time staff coverage of this facility by three recreation part-time leaders.
So it doesn't include the rangers?
No, it does not include the rangers at this point.
That's an additional $200, right?
The park ranger program was an additional $225,000.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity now for the public to comment. City clerk will read off the names of those who submitted cards. We ask that you, one, identify yourself and where you live, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Next first speaker is Jason Ryan.
My address is 2652 East Oakley, Tempe, Arizona, 85281. Mayor, council members, I believe that the monitoring could be a good, could be a good thing. I don't believe that city staff monitoring the park is the best solution. Couple reasons. They have not, they're not listening to any of the bike riders or skateboarders' input. They refuse to-
They're not doing what?
They're not listening to any of this bike riders or skateboarders' input on the park. They have not put together a committee like we asked, like as Prescott and many other cities have, a user group committee that has buy-in to the park that could help out with rules and any kind of changes, any kind of problems that Parks and Rec are having. I think that would be a great thing, but Parks and Rec does not want to do this here. They're, in the report that they put on your website, they're blaming bikes for excessive wear and tear on the pool coping, even though Brian Pino, the California Skate Parks Foreman, literally told them that it came from skateboards. It's just wear and tear, it's something that comes with any kind of pool coping. It's not really a big deal, but somehow they're blaming bikes. And I very rarely see any bikes riding that pool. They're just not listening to us. I think that the best way, if you want to go ahead with monitoring, best way would be to hire a company that has worked with bike riders and skateboarders. One of these is Action Park Alliance, who has parks and that they monitor, they contract with the city, they save the city a lot of money, they operate in Florida, Texas, California right now. They will be the ones who are contracting with Glendale when they open up their eighth or ninth park. I ask again that you change the no-peg rule to plastic pegs only. There's been a lot of great compliance with the no-pegs. Most of the kids are doing that. I have seen that some tickets have been given out recently for the pegs in the park. That doesn't even need to happen. If it was plastic pegs only, I believe all these kids would put on plastic pegs. One thing with the monitoring, I don't think there should be any charging. I think if you were to go with that system with all the smart cards and all these rates, I think that you actually lose money, because the kids won't go there. They'll go straight onto Target, they'll go straight to your other businesses where it's free. Or they'll go to other parks, they'll go to Glendale's park. And then your park is unsuccessful because it's not providing the users' needs. And I believe that there should be no separate sessions if you monitor. No separate sessions for any kind of users, any kind of age. I believe it should be available to all ages, all users. Another thing with the charging really quick, too, most of these kids are disadvantaged kids, and I don't think they could afford it, and I just don't think it would serve your purposes. Thank you.
Next speaker is Pat Blackburn.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. My name is Pat Blackburn, also a Tempe resident. I live at 2652 East Oakley. Appreciate you letting me come here again and speak. I'll be brief. I'm a little surprised by what I heard Mr. Barnes say. First of all, if you remember, I presented you with a packet of information. I'm hoping that you did some research and called some of those sources that I gave you. Those are people that are actually running existing parks that have had parks for 10 years, and the numbers that I just heard Mr. Barnes present you to me are just totally out of line. The solutions that he has for common problems that happen all around the country are totally out of line. It sounds to me like you want to turn the place into a prison rather than a park. It's just unheard of. Chandler has a skateboard-only park, their budget is $45,000. People at Chandler will tell you it costs more to maintain a softball field properly than it does a skate park. Call them up, find out, find out for yourself. Don't take this speculation that you've been given as fact. Go ahead and look into it. Go down there, I go down to the parks, I check them out. Now, the last time I was here, I told you I'd bring some of these kids in. These are responsible kids. We have these young kids here at city council meetings. Now, you guys are talking like they're tearing your place up, tearing your city up, causing all kinds of problems. It's not very often that you get young youth like this at a city council meeting. These kids are interested in what's going on in your city. They're interested in taking part in the democratic process, and they know how it operates. These are kids that we need to teach about making good decisions. Their parents tell them all the time, make good decisions, you're going to be held accountable. Well, I'm just telling you guys that for these guys, you need to make some good decisions. You need to show them how that works and make some good decisions, and show them that the accountability is there. We've got them all signed up to vote, everyone that's able to. This is a total lesson at civics forum and how democracy works. I'd just like to leave with one thing. All I ever hear is that everything seems to be blamed on bikes. And I look at the paper every day and I laugh, and I'm looking for the headline that says, "98-year-old Goodyear woman succumbs to heart attack. Pegs on bicycles in the skate park caused that." Or, "Goodyear resident's chihuahua gets run over by 18-wheeler on the freeway." Obviously, it was a bike that caused that. And with that, I'll leave it at that. I appreciate your time, I hope you make a good decision. I hope you can look these kids in the eye and see that they're here for justice, they need that park too. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joseph Aston.
Mr. Mayor. Hello, my name is Joseph Aston. I live in Goodyear, 17559 West Gold9 Avenue. First off, I am a skater of 25 years, I've seen a lot of skate parks, and I'd just like to thank you guys for the best skate park that I've ever skateboarded in my life, that's why I'm here. I see a lot of negative stuff in the papers, which is another reason why I'm here. It disappoints me, you know, to read this stuff and to know that this stuff is happening. However, you know, I skate at night. Okay, I skate at night for a lot, for several reasons, which I'll get into in just a second. But the kids that I skateboard with there, there's a lot of character building that I see. There's no riffraff, there's just kids really interested in progressing in the sport of skateboarding. And it's been pretty neat to see. I think there's a few bad seeds that hang out outside the fence that ruin it for everybody, every little kid and old guy, I guess like me, who still skate. Anyways, the other thing, staying open, you know, closing at eight, I've heard the rumor about it closing at eight because most of the problems occur at night. And I would just like to say, you know, in the heat of the summer, when it gets, you know, 100 and such degrees, the only time to skate is night, and you know, it also, so that's important to me for the nighttime hours, the usability of the park. And the other thing is the sun, when you're really skateboarding, the bowls that you guys have built, it's near impossible when you're blinded by the Phoenix sun, it's actually dangerous. So, most of us who skate the bowls skate at night. I support monitoring because, you know, we're disappointed with our kids, but you could throw, you know, 200 such kids, I mean, and I go during the week, you know, I go on a Tuesday and a Wednesday to try to avoid the crowds, and it's still wall-to-wall, you know, you can hardly get a little line in because this park is so successful. I think that's why we're having these problems. But again, backing up, I support monitoring because if you do have all these 200 kids, there's going to be problems, I don't, you know, any type of kids, 200 kids, you know, there're going to be some problems. I think we need to have these rules enforced, we need to have people there, you know, really monitoring what's going on, so it doesn't ruin it for all the kids who are actually there and guys like myself there to actually skateboard and improve our skills. I'm against charging because, well, we paid our taxes in the first place, and it was told to us that it was going to be free. All the other skate parks in the valley are, and I realize there's some, you know, things going on that are, the budget's increasing, but, see, I think this is going to lead to bigger problems, and that is the mom who has four kids and pays, you know, five bucks per kid, let's say, or even $3 per kid, now that's, they're like, you're going to stay there all day, you know, you're, oh, man, dang. Anyways, and I think that's just going to be a problem, because they're going to end up getting bored and causing problems. So, I'm done, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, maybe you could have the clerk review what the lights mean, because I don't think the gentleman's time was completely up when he thought it was up.
The yellow-
Perfect timing for me.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
The yellow is warning, and it turns red at the three minutes.
That's the key.
That's the key.
The next speaker is Peter D. Pasquale.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Peter D. Pasquale, I live at 13312 West Roanoke. I am a resident, a taxpayer, and a voter, and I seem to be in a minority here. I can't believe the number of out-of-towners who are coming here telling you how you should spend our money. I'm here because I read an article in the local paper, and it said you would budget at $31,000, and you would overrun that budget by 51. And I thought, I'm going to go and ask why. Why did you build a thing in the first place? Because if you were to count the number of residents who are using it, it probably got maybe, what, 5%, 10% of Goodyear residents using it? Everybody else is using it, and we have to pay the bill. Well, I'm blown away here. When I hear the numbers that your Parks and Recreation Director just threw out here, this is absurd. I mean, you're talking about hiring 20, 30 new staff people? Why don't you bring in the National Guard? That's what you're going to need to hold that place down. I mean, I really think as responsible elected officials, you've got to look at where is the bottom line? This facility kind of reminds me of the definition of a boat. It's a hole in the water that you keep throwing money into, and that's literally what you've got. You've got a hole in the concrete that the rate you're going, you're just going to keep dumping money into. My question is, where's the money going to come from? It's going to come from the citizens who pay taxes here, not the guys who are riding skateboards and BMX bikes and god knows whatever else. And to put cameras in there, you're going to get the same thing that they're getting up in Scottsdale. The people are going to be standing in front of the camera giving you the finger. So then, what are you going to do? You're going to take them to court? You're going to cost us money to prosecute them? Where is the bottom line? I mean, I think as a council, if you want to have a facility, and apparently it's got some justification, I'm not a skateboarder, I can't even stand up on my own two feet without, but maybe there's some merit to it. But how much are you going to put into this thing? We don't have a library, we don't have a single facility where the senior citizens can get together, but we've got a skateboard facility that is out of control. I'm here to ask you, where is the bottom line? And I think that's where you folks have to get together and say, okay, we're going to spend X number of dollars on this, and when those X number of dollars are finished, close it up. Because what you're being asked for here tonight is to reward bad behavior by dumping hundreds of thousands of dollars in for next year. Five years from now, what's bottom line going to be? Thank you.
Next speaker is Daniel Sharp.
I'm Daniel Sharp, and I live in Surprise, and I just moved into a new house, so I can't really remember my address. And I'm here on the park closing at 8:00, because that's what everyone's been talking about lately. And the time the sun goes down, it's about 6:30, so that gives us about, like, an hour and a half, hour and a half, two hours to ride until 8:00. So, there's pretty much no point of even going, because the time the sun goes down, the time you get there, you're almost gone already. And for the pegs, I think if you're going to allow pegs, just allow plastic pegs? Plastic pegs? Because anyone has so much concrete damage and coping damage? And that's all I have to say, really.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Joseph Owen.
My name's Joe, and my address is 825 North Los Roadless Drive. I've lived in Goodyear my whole life, started skateboarding in the mid-'80s. I've been riding valley, concrete skate parks since Desert West opened in 1997. First, I'd like to thank the city of Goodyear for giving me the opportunity to teach the next generation of skateboarders an amazing skate park. Kids are learning the basics of skateboarding and a good understanding of public park etiquette. I know the park has been getting a lot of negative attention lately, but I urge the council to please reconsider options of closing the park early or splitting up sessions. Even though there's been a lot of occurrences after 8:00 p.m., this is also the best time to ride the park if you want to avoid the crowds. Not to mention it's the only time that a lot of guys my age and older have to ride the park during the week due to families and careers. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. I didn't come here to ask the council to get the bikes out of the park. It's obvious that BMX is popular, and they need parks of their own. They deserve it, just like skateboarders do. Splitting up sessions ruin it for both parties involves, it means less time we all have to ride the park. For every one kid there is with a lack of respect for the park, there is 10 kids who are there to learn and use the park for whatever it's designed for. I see these kids in the park every day, and I skate with them. In years to come, the park will turn out some amazing talent, and it will give kids who don't have the money to participate in sports leagues a chance to be a part of something. As a parent myself and a Goodyear citizen, I ask you to please keep the skate park open until 10:00 and open to the public. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alex Kertigwa.
Hi, my name is Alex Kertigwa. I'm from 10582 West Crimson Lane in Avondale, Arizona. I just came before you guys today to say that I disagree with the new rule that you guys want to close the park down at 8:00, and actually mention that this is the only place for bikers to go in Arizona, actually on the west side of Phoenix. We have no other place to go besides Reed Skate Park, which is all the way down in Mesa. It's about a 45-minute drive. And I'd just like to thank you for the wonderful park that you guys put together. Thank you.
Next speaker is Timothy McGinnis.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here, I don't know, for the group sessions, like separating them. I skateboard.
Your address is-
Oh, I'm Timothy Joseph McGinnis, and I live on 11201 West Citrus Grove in Avondale. And I'm here, because I don't want them to separate it, because I ride a skateboard and my older brother rides a bicycle, and he's my only ride out here, like, to the skate park. So, if you guys do separate it, then I have to, like, bum ride with somebody if I want to ride it. It's really fun, too, like, I'm really glad you guys built it out here, so there's none in Avondale, and there's one in Thunderbird, but it's not that good. I don't know. I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is William McGinnis.
Hey, William, I'd give my brother a ride anywhere he asked.
Yeah, my name is Will McGinnis, I live on 11201 West Citrus Grove, Avondale, Arizona, 85323. I'm here, the separate sessions thing sounds kind of ridiculous to me, because like he said, like, my little brother just said, I gave him a ride to the park, and he skateboards and rides a scooter, so, and he has nothing else to do, and he has no way of getting here, so it depends on me. And then the whole thing about the no pegs and everything, kids were actually starting to use plastic pegs, I noticed. I've been riding since the park opened, I'm there every night from 8:00 to 10:00. I'm also one of the kids that helps pick up the trash every night. We'll get together and pull one of the bags out of the trash can and go around and pick it all up, just because we don't want to be kicked out there, we like riding there, it's a fun place to be, it keeps us all off the streets, notice around our neighborhoods and everything. and everything, no one's riding around at the Fry's or the Targets and Walmarts and stuff anymore, that's all, everybody just goes to that skate park because it's somewhere to go, not causing trouble anymore. And the, the drugs and teenage prostitution thing I heard about, I haven't seen either one done at the skate park, and it's probably going on after hours, and security cameras probably would help with that to figure out what's going on at night and stuff, because I've, I haven't seen any of that stuff going on. And closing at eight, it's just, because I work two jobs, I don't really usually get there until about eight o'clock at night, and I like to ride for two hours a day, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And the last speaker is Tan- Tanner Engelhardt.
My name's Tanner Engelhardt, I have a one one two ones, no, one 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 two six West Fawn Lane in, uh, Avondale, Arizona, and, uh, this skate park you guys built, it gave me something to do every day. I used to go ride at my local schools and the local, like, in front of ditches and stuff, irrigation ditches, they're dangerous and you fall in them, get all tore up because they're all rough and whatnot, you guys gave us some nice smooth concrete to roll on. Uh, yeah, I really do nothing else but ride my bike and go to school, and if I didn't go to school, I'd do nothing but ride my bike, that's all I do. But this skate park gives me a place to be, and I've met half these kids in here, I met them at this skate park, it gives us a real sense of unity. There's a bunch of different kids in here that I would've never met, I would've never hung out with, I would've never thought of hanging out with if the skate park wasn't here to allow me to do that. And it's like, I rode to the skate park today because it's so close to my house, so to say, like, that I'm an out-of-towner, my parents may not pay taxes for the city of Goodyear, but they do pay taxes and all that, so we're close enough. That's all I got, thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other comments from the public? Okay, first off, I wanna thank everybody for showing up this evening on this subject of import to all of us, and, uh, particular compliments to those who had the courage to stand up there, it takes some courage, so, congratulations, okay? Alright, uh, it's hard to call for motions since I have no idea what we would, how we would make that motion, so why don't we start discussing and try to limit our comments to, uh, really what we think needs to happen here, okay? Can we do that? Okay, who'd like to start?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Souza. Mr. Mayor, I'm a trustee of AMR RP, which is, which is the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, and, uh, we are concerned about the risk that the pool is undertaking here with the bike riders. And frankly, we're at a stage right now where we're, we're doing a tremendous amount of investigating, investigation on how we handle a risk that involves BMX parks along with skateboarders, and that's a concern to the pool itself, which the city of Goodyear is a member of. You heard what the risks are for this city, and you've heard what the pool is maybe going to recommend to the city, and that's assuming a certain percentage of risk on its own, so that you folks can ride in that park. I'm not about to assume that risk. We gave the bikers a trial period, and as far as I'm concerned, that trial period is I've heard from the Director of Parks, the conduct that we've had at the park on several occasions, I've heard about the police reports, the amount of police involvement that we have in that area, the amount of drug use that we have in that area, and frankly, it's the only time in this city that I've heard that type of report about any type of agency that we support. And frankly, I'm not about, I'm not about, as a representative of the city of Goodyear, to assume this liability. We have spent a tremendous amount of money in making this skate park available to skate skaters, and that's what the park should be allocated to, to do, and that's to accommodate the kids that wanna use skates, not people outside of our city that wanna use bikes. And that's my position, Mr. Mayor. I'm for closing the park as far as the bike riders are concerned, and to make it available only to skater. We have invested and looking forward to a tremendous amount of money if we continue this program, and we're talking over five hundred thousand dollars in additional, in additional expenses for services that provide not to the people of Goodyear, but to outsiders, and outsiders who are shown no respect for what we have provided in an upscale skate park. We have tried to govern and supervise this, this park, and our people that have attempted to do this have been scorned violently, vehemently by those that use the park, and I'm not about to stand here and take that. Five hundred thousand dollars provides us, this, this city with a lot of police officers, and that's where I want this kind of money spent. The need for police officers in this city is great, and the need for this type of facility to provide an avenue for the type of experiences that we've had is not what I, I think this park, park was designed to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Holland?
Well, uh, I was one of the council people that really wanted the bike and skateboarders' opportunity, and I, I felt that if everyone worked together and were cooperative, we could really be a success, and I wanted it, I wanted people to say, Goodyear has managed to pull this off. When I read about the police reports and the damage, and it's the money that's involved, this is very concerning to our citizens. When I hear things like, um, profanity, abusive language, graffiti, tagging stickers, um, alcohol, drugs, and tobacco products are prohibited in the park, I went down to the park, and so I am aware of what's going on down there, I'm very, very disappointed. Um, I, I think it's time that we said no to the bike riders and, and think about a park of their own, so I'm gonna support that.
Councilmember Osborne?
It's ironic that I come on today.
You picked the dude.
Um, first of all, three of my own children are teenagers, and it takes this policeman to enforce safety between them, so I can imagine having two hundred teens all at once, it's gonna take some security and enforcement. Um, I also am a team leader for the YMCA, and I know we have very few places for teens to hang out where they feel like they can maybe have profanity, which none of us are happy that they're doing, but that they can do without mom standing behind them and telling them to, you know, go wash their mouth out. Um, I'm not happy about the drugs and alcohol, all those types of issues are not good, and you guys know that, and, um, when you see some, some others that are hanging out that shouldn't be doing that, you have to talk to them, this is the time for you to step up to the plate. Some of the kids that have come up this evening, this is an opportunity for some kind of, of council of your own to be made, some kind of club that you guys can put together. I still will stand with this park, it just opened, and yes, there's a lot of, lot of issues that it's, it's got, and it needs to be worked out, but to take a complex that, I don't, I wasn't, I don't even know, I assume in the millions of dollars to put together, you can't say, okay, be done with it, you know, we just have to find the answer, and, and you've gone from mom and dad out of town and the kids have the whole house to, to nothing, there's gotta be an in-between, there's gotta be the, what, um, Mr. Barnes stated about, um, having a, what do you call them, a rec leader? That needs to be there, that talks the kids talk and walks the walk, I don't care if he has a Mohawk, but, you know, he, he's the one that can say, guys, you can't be in here, you don't have the proper gear, or your, your bike's not good, um, I know we, now, the new thing that I don't know a lot about and has to be answered, and that is the insurance issue regarding the risk, which, that's all need to me, so, um, that could be detrimental, uh, that really could be, and, and if it's a case of building another facility, there's just not enough for the kids to do out here, and I know that the majority of them are coming from out of our own city, but something has to be done for these guys, and, uh, so I still support that. Um, you know what, the, the timeframe that some people want to, I don't know a lot about, of the hours closing it at eight o'clock at night, well, you know what, some of your telephones need to be home doing your homework, but during the summer, there should be, uh, some longer hours, the weekends, that's when the kids wanna come out and play, but that's when the security, security needs to be there. I don't know exactly what we're asking to go on this evening procedure-wise, but just stating opinions, so that's where I sit right now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lord?
Well, I too was one of those people that voted to bring the BMX bikers in. Uh, I did it, you came forth and you, in a democratic process, and you did a good job that night, but I also told you the responsibility was on your shoulder, moreover than the skateboarders. Why? Because this park was built for skateboarders, not for the BMXers. I am in favor of having another installation built for the BMX riders, it's important, and I know how hard this is, but I have to answer to the other taxpayers of Goodyear, and out of the group tonight, two of you are from Goodyear, the rest of you are from all the other cities, so you know, your parents are not paying taxes here in Goodyear, so these are the people that I have to answer to. And then foremost is that insurance, do you have any idea the debt that our city could entail over one lawsuit? It's something that I can go with, and, and I'm not going to. The other thing that does bother me a little bit, um, is that people from other cities and other areas are coming here tonight and other nights, and essentially dictating how you think we should run things in Goodyear. I don't mind a suggestion, but, but I do, I do that little edge that you seem to brought before me, it does bother me somewhat, because I have a big responsibility, this entire council has a huge responsibility. Am I against BMX riders? No, I am not. It's a great sport, I watched it on television, it's exciting, but to combine the two, I think we're just, I just don't think it's the time to do that, I think we gave you the chance. Can you imagine, did you, did we ever think, did any of you ever thought, we'd come back to this meeting, and you're gonna pay two hundred and twenty-five thousand more dollars for this thing? Did you, any of us? I don't think so. I mean, we've given so much, and we do care about our young people, and we are looking for other avenues for our children and our teenagers to have some kind of recreation, and we'll continue to work on that. Our goal is to bring something to you young people, but there has to be limits, limits on affordability. I do believe we need a monitoring on the park, I'm, I'm all for the cameras, um, I had visited Colorado after we agreed that you all could come to the park, and I visited at least six different skateboard parks personally and talked to people and talked to bikers, BMX, and skateboarders, and the problems we're having that are listed on this list are the same problems they had, and when I came back and I gave the list to staff, I was very hesitant, and they said, do you want to do anything about this? I said, no, we agreed to give you all trial, and we did, and those problems still exist. I think there are problems from both of you, I think there's BMX riders that are not being very nice and skateboarders, and I also have been to the park at night and during the day, and let me tell you, they're not the plastic pegs that you're talking about. I've had conversations with young men about smoking, and I've had a young man tell me, I don't have to listen to you, you're not my boss, my parents pay taxes, and so you owe us this park, we don't owe you anything, we owe it for the contingency of, of Goodyear, of what's best for them. So my goal here tonight is that we're gonna look into building a separate park for the BMX and go with the skateboarders.
Councilmember Antonio?
You know, I voted the same, voted the same way to do the co-mingled, um, boards and bikes and allow, allow both to occur, but as I'm, as I'm sitting here this evening, I'm listening to the conversation, I'm writing notes to myself, because I think fundamentally there's, there's, there's almost two different issues here, there's, there's, or even three different issues. There's a liability issue that obviously has come to the forefront seventy-two hours ago, um, that I don't think any of us foresaw, or maybe some, maybe some of us saw that coming, others didn't. Um, there's a safe, there's safety issues out there, and then there's just a flat-out respect for a code or respect for law, um, or, or any ordinances, uh, that exist, and, and it is unfortunate that it kinda sounds like some of the comments, um, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing my, my peers here, but because you're in the audience this evening, we're looking at you, and because you're participating in this process, we're looking at you and, and discussing this, uh, in front of you almost in such a fashion that it seems that maybe you're the bad seeds that are sitting out there, and maybe some of you among the crowd this evening are bad seeds, are, are influencing in such a way that is not constructive to the process, others of you are obviously constructive in this process. Um, and, so, you know, I think, you know, liability aside, it's, you gotta start at the fundamental respect issue, and it's like, you know, we kinda let, we let things go, we let loose and just opened up, come one, come all, and allow it to occur, and, um, you know, ninety days into it, or whatever we are into it, um, how many days, Brian?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four days, yeah, I mean, seventy-four days into it, I ask myself, you know, is the experiment failing? Is it evolving? Um, you know, what are the hypotheses on the, on the horizon that we can all predict that will occur? Uh, you know, and it's, it's, it's challenging. I, you know, I wrote a message back to staff on Valentine's Day when we first started dealing with this, and I first and foremost said my, you know, my, in my eyes, it's gotta be a safe place. Bottom line, I don't want my kids going there, I don't, you know, I, I don't want, you know, drug paraphernalia found in the bathroom, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't want tagging going on, I don't want disrespect between individuals going on, and so, we've gotta nip that somehow, some ways, you know, and obviously we'll discuss that further this evening. Uh, second, second to that, I said to staff, it's gotta be a safe place for Goodyear residents first. I mean, Goodyear residents, bottom line, paid for this park, funded this park, finances out of the city fund of the park, you know, and then their resident, and then their visitors, and then, and then other residents, and if, and if in order to do that, we have to develop a resident versus non-resident use system, I'd support that, I'd, I'd be willing to discuss that further and hear, hear about that. Um, so, you know, I don't, I don't know if we will come to a concrete conclusion this evening, I, the more and more I keep chewing on this, and I know I'm concrete with staff on the phone when I discuss this, it's, it's such an evolutionary process, you know, the putting three feet on the fence, as I'm here, you know, as I hear it tonight, I just, what kind of message does that sound? What kinda, um, you know, is, is that the, is that the right thing, or is it an enforcement issue? Um, because I have a feeling, we get rid of the bikes today, tomorrow the bikes go away, we might have lessened the safety issue or lessened the liability issue, but we're not getting at the heart of the safety issue and, and the respect issue, and, and the fact that kids are coming to this park and, you know, smoking up a joint, or, or, you know, disrespecting their peers, their friends, their families, um, you know, and their, you know, and their parents and their grandparents and everything else for, for doing those actions, so, um, I, I'm a little, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, I get the sense that maybe we ought to go into a, go into, for lack of a better term, another trial period, and if it's, if it is taking one group out for the near term in order to, uh, start to gain control of the longer-term issue.
That's crowd, crowd control, we're doing right there.
Yeah, I mean, it's somewhat crowd control, but if we, you know, if we need to formulate, um, a group, you know, if we are to formulate a group that is going to serve as some guiding principles or code, or if we get into that discussion tonight, I'll only support that if that's Goodyear resident. I, I, I can't see come one, come all advise us on everything, that's, I mean, this gentleman right here that's talking about here, very, you know, see, he's, he's obviously out there on a day-to-day basis, there's another gentleman that was from Goodyear, those folks have been paying taxes in the city and paying for the thing, those are the folks we need on the group, no disrespect to the other folks who've gotten up, but, you know, safety-wise, I, I, I think we got, I'm torn, because I think we're focusing on the, on the co-mingle issue and somewhat pushing aside the other issues, when the heart of this matter isn't the co-mingle issue, it's.
Behavior.
It's the behavior. It's the behavior.
Except, except do you agree that maybe with, with, you know, numbers make a big difference, when you have that many people in the park at one time? By changing that, it certainly has to help it by, just by the sheer number. How many, how many do you think at one time in a park?
We've estimated that on weekends, a conservative number at any one time is approximately 250 users during the weekends, and possibly 100 to 150 every weekday evening.
And how many did we get at the grand opening?
I think we probably far exceeded any fire department capacity if it was a structure. We, we probably had 500 users in there at any one time.
In your estimate of the weekend users, how many, what percentage would be skaters and what percentage would be bikers?
Councilmember Sousa, when, when we started out operating the park, we estimated that there were probably two-thirds of the users were skateboarders, and now we would estimate that probably 50% of the users are skateboarders.
And what do you attribute the reduction in skaters?
I think it's probably attributed to two facts. Number one, that some skateboarders don't like to co-mingle with BMX bikes, they communicated that to us. I also think that the pipe, the bike users have recognized that this is an excellent facility, and the word of its being open to bike riders has, has spread, and so a lot of bike riders have come to here after the word of this park has spread.
Mayor, can I just say one more?
I want to go to
Yeah.
The vice mayor shot here.
I'd like to take a different view of this, because, see, I see a lot of you riders are here, and you've come to us, this is about the third or fourth time you've come to us. If you want this thing straightened up, if you want this thing to go the way you'd like to see it go, why don't you do something about it? We have, we have an insurance problem here, we have a concern with liability that's going to cost the city mega bucks. We have people who live in the city of Goodyear who refuse to bring their children and come to that skate park because they fear for what goes on there, and it's mostly the fear of outsiders because they don't know you. Now, if you took this on yourself and said, "Okay, we're going to form a group, and we're going to control each of us, and we're going to see that the smokers don't show up, that the pot smokers or the pot users don't show up, that we're going to control this and we're going to take care of it, we're not going to let them throw trash all over the place, we're not going to let them tear up the skate park, and you guys work together to make this work as a group, and then you came to us, and if things improve, you know, we might see it a little differently, but right now, you're expecting us to set a standard, but you want the standard to be something loose enough that you can do any damn thing you want to do." And that's not what we want. But if we turn the tables on you, and you say, "Guys, you go out there and you form a group, and you patrol that every night, every night you have your own group, you're there skating, you're there riding your bikes, you patrol it, and you see that these other guys come in," because obviously, you're not the guys that tear things up, or you wouldn't be here. Why don't you watch what's going on and take care of your park? Form a little committee, do whatever it takes, and show us that you should have some responsibility beyond just coming and riding in the park, and tearing up whatever has to be torn up, and watching whatever's being torn up, and doing nothing about it. You need to take control of it. The idea, I hear some of these adults that are here speaking for you, come to us at this council meeting and say, "Oh, things are fine, leave it alone, they're doing great, these are kids, big kids." No. And things aren't right. I've been there too, I've seen it. I've been told off by a few of those guys, and I've seen one guy who got mad because people wouldn't let him in the park because they were cleaning up the park. In fact, I was there with Brian that day, and threw his bike in the back of the pickup and zipped out of there. He burned rubber all the way through the parking lot, didn't even stop at the, going into Litchfield Road, and went right on up the street. That didn't show me there was very much respect there for the park, or for our city, or for anything. But you people, as young citizens, you need to take this in your hand. Can't you do that? And take, and say, "We are going to be the ones who are going to take care of this park." And when people do anything, even throw trash, anything, or try to tear up the restrooms, or mess things up, go in there and say, "We're not going to stand for it." And, and take whatever rules you set up and make it work. You can do that. Otherwise, you know, I think you're going to lose it. And our citizens in this city are not going to put up with too much more of it, because it's the citizens of this city that are paid for that, not you. Very few of you live in Goodyear. So I want you to think about this. And beyond that, I agree with just about everything everyone in the council has said, so, but I wanted to add that one little piece to it. And I think this is happening all over the country, and with our adults. I see in other states, rather than the police or the patrol, taking all responsibility of keeping the citizenry in line, they're asking the citizens to help keep the citizens in line. And I think it's time we did that here, and I think you people, if you want to be responsible and you want to grow up and be responsible citizens, this is a good place to start. So give that some thought and do something about it. And you certainly don't need any adult to come and bark for you, or you don't need to come to us and say, you know, "We, we really are good kids, we're going to tear a few things up once in a while, and, you know, these other guys do, but it's okay." It's not okay. So take care of it, and you can keep it. If you don't, you're going to lose it. But that's one way you can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lord?
I just wanted to clarify something. I don't want the BMX riders to leave here tonight thinking that we're putting 100% blame on you for the condition of the park, or actions that are taken place. We know that it's in total skateboarders and BMX riders, it's a combination, it's misbehaving. So I don't want you to think that our attitude is because we don't like BMX riders, so we're just going to play, put all the blame on you. Just wanted to clarify that.
As, as, it's been pointed out, it looks like there's kind of three issues that we're discussing. First of all, that we do need to know more about the liability, correct? And whether or not we truly can even have the bikers in there by not putting ourselves in any kind of liability danger, which I totally understand. The other issue is whether or not security, as in park rangers or whatever, or as Brian put, the phasing, correct? How we are going to go about that? Is that
Well, I
Okay. And George, you mentioned, or maybe it was you, Rob, mentioned, you had a third aspect to this, that
So it's the liability, the safety, and then just flat-out behavior?
Well, cost, and that was
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah.
The idea that we're going to have to hire this many people when we need, someone just mentioned, I hope, mentioned about policemen, we've got other issues in this city.
Well, and I agree, some of those costs, I don't know that are, I mean, the machine to have the little cards, I mean, you could have a, if you have the park rangers there or the park leaders there, you can have a punch card, you don't have to have a $58,000 machine to, you can have somebody do a punch card, that somebody buys a punch card that's in out of, not a resident, and they pay $50 for their punch card, and a resident pays 30. I mean, there can be a difference in that, you know, when you get to that point, it doesn't have to be some of those issues. But I think the biggest issue right now is the insurance liability, is what it sounds like.
You know, what I would recommend, from a liability standpoint, that, and here again, this is not going to be a reflection specifically on the bikers, but I think we're going to have to have a moratorium here on bike riding in this park. And I think it's going to have to be for a period of 30 days. And I would like to have that start immediately. And while this moratorium is in place, then it would give us an opportunity to work with AMR RP, to determine just exactly what they have in mind as far as our continued liability is going to be in providing the availability of this park, this skate park, to bikers. And if we are to assume that liability, and at what cost is it going to be to the city in additional premium? And that's, that's a factor. But I really think that we cannot risk taking on this liability during a period of when it's under review. And that's what I think this 30 days would do. It's a review period by AMRP to determine whether or not they're going to cover this park for the city of Goodyear. Or we have, we have to assume the additional liability, the $200 million, a million of dollars. And that's, that basically can happen with a quadriplegic, there's no question about that. And let me tell you, with some of the things that happen in this skate park and with bike riders, that can be a liability, and that could be something that really could happen. But I don't, I'm not, I'm not willing to assume that liability on the part of Goodyear and it's innocent. But I feel that we should declare a moratorium as far as bike riding in this park is concerned, and establish that 30-day period from a given date to a given date, and have us work with AMRP to determine just exactly how far our liability is going to be. And I would recommend that, Mr. Mayor.
You know, we hate to keep beating a dead horse here, because I'd like to go back to something that one of the speakers had commented on, public park etiquette. And whether we keep out the bike riders or not, or a moratorium, that still is an issue that is very, very important, and that is the etiquette in the park. I don't mean the trash or any of that, I'm talking about just being polite and civil to the people that are there. The folks that have gone in to check on the park have been insulted and talked down to, called names, you know, we're not, not talking, being nice here, and it was uncalled for. So I guess I'd like to go back to the monitoring situation, because I think that may help some of this. And I don't believe it's the city's responsibility to teach skateboarders and bike riders how to be nice to each other. It is certainly not our job. But in order to, to support the safety issues that we have in our park, and Councilwoman Antoniak talked about the safety issues, I think you have to learn to kind of observe that park etiquette. So, Mayor, I'm ready to, where do we go from now?
I'd like to make a comment if I could. Couple of comments first, and then just an idea here. First off, this, these problems were predictable. Nothing here was not anticipated previously, quite candidly. I don't think we can moralize here either. If you want to send everybody to basic training for three months and teach them respect, you can do that, but we can't do that here. So we can't change a person to respect his fellow neighbors, whether they're an adult or a fellow youngster. I like 2200, 2200, I like 10:00 PM as a closing versus 8:00, I think 8:00 is too early. I do not like incrementalism in management. I think we should be able to at least decide some basic things and direct those things this evening. And what I'd like to see is, safety, safety is paramount. It's above and beyond everything else here. We cannot stand to have one of these youngsters end up in a wheelchair for the rest of their life. When I talked to Brian the other day, I said, "You know, someone's going to crack a skull in that place." And he said, "Oh, no, they already have." It's already happened, there've been broken bones. Somebody literally could be killed out there, and, and we would be partially responsible for that. But, so, I would, I think joint use complicates the safety issue. Having the two different users complicates the safety issue. I, I do think, Brian, somehow we need to mandate safety gear. There shouldn't be anybody in there without a helmet and protection on their knees and elbows, I don't think. If that is an insurance issue, then we have to face that. You can't face it tonight, but it needs to be faced. But we can't let people get hurt. Let me just finish, please. And then, I do think we need to build a layout for BMXers. It's going to cost, if it costs a million dollars, it costs a million dollars, but we need to move in that direction. I think we need skateboarders one place, BMXers another place, maybe the same park, I don't know, but we have to, it's incumbent upon us to take care of these folks, I think. So clearly, we cannot afford these police costs and fire costs, and costs which you're having to acquire through just trying to be good in your job. This has gone beyond what the citizens should have a right to expect. I mean, they should not expect to be spending money for these reasons, to the, to the limit in which we are spending money. It's almost absurd, I'll be quite candid about it.
It is.
So, I've, I did, I did hear that some of us, I think four or more, want to stop BMX in that place, I believe, if I did hear that. Maybe some of these things need to be left to staff to work out. How do you mandate safety gear? If in fact we want to mandate safety gear. But some of the 1000, the 10:00 PM issue, that's an operational thing for you, Brian, I think. But, anyway, so.
I agree with everything you said. So how do we want to, how do we tackle that?
Well, why don't we get a motion, then we can discuss if there's opposition. We would need a motion that, that we're going to limit this park for skateboard use, and if you want to, and direct the staff to determine how we can mandate safety gear. And we want to move, we want to direct the staff to move to build a layout for BMXers. Is that okay?
Can we amend that to add on the rules that Brian set up for us tonight, that he would like to see?
The monitoring
The monitoring, well, all of the, I don't know, within that. Your recommendations tonight were
We may not, if, if we have it for a single use, we may not need those, I think you need to look at it
Oh, I think you still do.
I think, I think you need to look at it for single users. Do you need 24 park timers for single use? I don't know. Do you need three park rangers? If you do, great. Not great, but we'll, we'll do it. But do we know that?
I think you're still going to get quite crowded in the
We've got to have people monitoring
It's just so we don't know the number.
Taking command and control of the situation. But how many, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as I was listening to your comments, yeah, we probably do need to have some staff in there, even if we remove the BMX users, simply as Councilmember Lord commented, it's, it's not all BMXers. This is just the users as a, as a whole group who are causing some of these issues. And eliminating one user group is not necessarily going to eliminate all of these issues. So there probably is going to need some staffing to be able to address some of these issues. We have in our parks rules that safety equipment, apparel, such as helmets and pads, are recommended. That's, that's not a mandated rule simply because of the fact, without supervision, direct supervision within the facility, we have no way to enforce that rule.
But what stops us, what, I mean, what stops me tonight from making a motion that anybody inside the gates at a skateboard facility will don a helmet? And we strongly recommend elbow and knee pads. I mean, you know, National Safe Kids has statistics up and down, and they'll run you weary on head injuries. I don't put my two-year-old in a bike trailer driving two miles an hour down my street without a bike helmet. You're an idiot if you get in a bike, on a bike or on a skateboard without putting your helmet on, especially going in one of these, in one of these facilities, and we see kids out there day in and day out. Day one, the kid cracked his head open in the pool, day one. I mean, I hate to call the guy an idiot while he's off to the hospital, but it just wasn't wise, you know?
Right, I have, I have one more thing on that, adding
It seems to me that that's, that's one that's finite to me. I mean, that's, as I've, as I've seen the head injuries in my experience in the fire, when I worked for the fire department out in the East in the East Valley, and I sat on the Safe Kids Coalition, I asked the question here last time, and we talked about the liability because we couldn't enforce it. At this point, it's unacceptable to me. I won't support any rules moving forward without evidence.
And the concern that I noticed when I was there several times, I was trying to count the number of parents that were there, and I was trying to judge the age of some of the children. And they looked below the age. They should have had a parent there. Have you found that parents are just dropping them off as kind of a babysitting area? I mean, I kind of counted what parents... Now, they could have been hidden in their cars. I don't know, but I didn't see them there, and that concerns me.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lord, yes, we have seen some of the drop-offs so that we know that there are younger kids there that probably should have parental guidance.
So a park ranger would be able to determine that as the child came in, your age, where's your parent?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember... It may not necessarily be a park ranger program because the park ranger program would be designed so that a park ranger is not within the facility at all times. The rec leader program might be able to address that specifically.
However you want to determine, the person that would be there, the monitor.
That's correct. Also, if I may, I would address one additional point, and that is, we have other rules that are mandated, but park staff is only on-site until approximately 2:30 every day. After that time, from 2:30 until 10 PM, there is no direct staffing of this facility. And so there is no way to enforce any of these rules. Part of the rules about the protected pegs, we tried to implement in order to protect the coping. We found that probably seventy-five to ninety percent of the bike riders in the facility were ignoring that rule. At the suggestion of several of the BMX riders that were made to me, came to me and made a suggestion one evening, we implemented the no-pegs rule to try and get them to follow that rule because it was something that was suggested by them. My staff says that during the day, while they're there, there's probably twenty-five percent of the users that still have pegs on their bicycles. Even those that they see and talk to an hour later, the next day, still have pegs on their bicycles. So having staff within the facility at all hours is the only way that we're going to be able to enforce any rules that we mandate.
And when we do that, we assume insurance liability.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Souza, I would defer to Dean Kokenauer on that particular question.
Well, why don't we get a motion here, I think? Councilmember Lord, you want to make a...
I'm not sure what the motion is at this point.
Does it have to be one this evening? I'm assuming you could maybe end up with a couple of different motions.
Yeah, you could do that.
You might split up the issues.
Yeah. And I think manpower-wise, absolutely, we need manpower there, but we don't need it to decide the number tonight, do we?
No, because we need a recommendation.
Yeah. But you're being told, I think, one person here, now two, is not going to go for anything unless you mandate helmets.
I agree. You have three.
Okay? So accept that. And the other thing is, it looks like a majority of us want this to be a skateboard-only park. And we need bodies to enforce things, right?
Yes.
So why don't we vote a motion on those two?
Okay. And who are we going to call these bodies?
The chair cannot make a motion.
All right. What are these bodies going to be called? So I get the terminology right. Can't call it a ranger, I call it a what?
Monitor. I thought it was...
The hard job to determine.
Rec leader.
Yeah. Rec raising staff.
Manpower.
Manpower, thank you.
The dude.
Okay, I make a motion. Somebody else?
Go ahead.
That we, number one, will eliminate the BMX riders, and this will be just a skateboard. I'm looking at you right now. I'm recommending that we, first of all, make the skateboard park truly a skateboard park, eliminating the BMX riders, that we mandate helmets, and that we look to having park monitors.
I had a motion. Could I have a second? A motion from Councilmember Lord, and a second from Councilmember Souza. Discussion on the motion.
One question.
Councilmember Osborne.
No, no. Part of this is asking for direction on building a BMX park. We're not adding that to this. Would that be another...
Just for clarification. City manager, for clarification, that is on the books, a BMX park. What is it?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lord, we have funding identified in our CIP to construct a second skate park BMX facility within the next year or two.
We're telling you BMX.
BMX. It will be a BMX. Yes. We have the money that can be allocated specifically for this use.
All right.
Good.
So there's your answer to that.
Thank you.
And we'd like it done soon.
Yes.
Just think we'd like everything else done soon.
That's what everyone wants, everything else.
I know. But we owe that to the BMXers.
I agree. It's a viable sport. It truly is a sport, and they need a facility.
Okay. Further discussion, Councilmember Antoniak.
No, I don't want to conclude with this one.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it seven-zero.
Two.
Okay?
Now, I'll clarify.
Okay.
Staff will be bringing back... I assume you'll have to bring back some sort of ordinance on the helmet issue or something to address the helmet issue? No?
It's just a park rule.
It's just a park rule.
Yeah, it's a park rule.
They'll trespass if they're not in compliance.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I need to ask this one. We talked about it, but in your management, we didn't wrap this into the motion, but like schools, I know you weaved it into your presentation, but I had recommended the double fine or triple fine issue like you have in elementary school in our parks. Is that something that you're going to come back to us, report on?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, that is a subject that's a little bit more complicated, and we've begun those discussions with our legal department, city prosecutor, police department. We will continue those discussions and pursue this vigorously, and we will come back and report to you on that.
But it is understood, it's this particular time, in order to acquire usage in the park, how much are going to be mandated?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Souza, yes, we will mandate helmet use in the park. We will modify our park rules to mandate that.
That's in our... That's in the minutes.
Okay. Shall we take a break, and then go to the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. How about seven forty-five?
Why don't we rejoin now if we could? We're on scene. And what we'll do is Brett Burningham will present the next two items. They both relate to Pebble Creek Village Marketplace. Is that right Brett? You'll do them both at once, or? Okay. So staff presentation.
Thank you Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, members of the public. The applicant is requesting the rezoning of approximately 25 acres of land located the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway from the preliminary PAD zoning district to the final PAD zoning district. And the rezoning is to facilitate the development of the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace mixed-use commercial center. As you can see on the aerial photo that I've placed before you, land uses surrounding the subject property include the Cobblestone Creek Commercial Center to the north, to the east, the Goodyear Center Point PAD, Interstate 10 to the south, and to the west, undeveloped property zoned agricultural. As part of the final PAD development plan, the applicant has established minimum site development standards that are included in your packet. There are design guidelines, building architectural guidelines, landscape architecture standards for the development. And the intent was to provide a framework to ensure that high-quality commercial development would be master designed within a unified development. Moving to the master site plan for the center. As you can see vehicular access to the site will be from two driveways on McDowell Road. Here and here. Excuse me, here, here. There's also two on Pebble Creek Parkway. The driveways on Pebble Creek Parkway will be restricted to ride-in, ride-out, turning movements. There are traffic signals proposed at the intersection of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway, and also at the McDowell Road and Entry driveway, which is this area here. Additional access to the site will be provided through private driveways, internal driveways in the center. And I'd like to show you some of the elevations that were included in your packet. This building, particular building, has been identified as Arizona Tile, approximately 99,000 square foot building shown on the site plan. There are also junior anchors, there are shops, and there are pads. And conceptual building elevations are, were provided to show how these buildings will look. And when future applications come in, these elevations will be used to ensure that the development adheres to these standards. This is the elevations of the junior anchors that will be adjacent to I-10. Here are the conceptual pad location, conceptual pad elevations. And finally, conceptual shops elevations. Staff needs to note that the, staff has worked with the applicant to ensure that substantial amount of arcade or shade features in the front elevations particularly were provided, shown, to ensure that, to promote a pedestrian environment, to provide shade and to provide a more of a shopping atmosphere for, for the customers. But we did work with the applicant to ensure that there would be substantial covered awnings, substantial arcade elements for people to walk under as they are in front of these shops and pad buildings. The requested final PAD zoning for the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace is consistent with the designations of the general plan and also with the city center gateway overlay I'll move now to assigned location plan. It's a little difficult to see, but I'll point out some, some components of this plan. A comprehensive sign package has been included with this final PAD. The sign package contains provisions for one freeway pylon sign. You can see that is labeled right here. It also contains proposed four freestanding multi-tenant signs, building signage, directional signage, and there would be one primary identification monument sign located at the corner of the two arterial roadways. The applicant is proposing a few, a few deviations to the zoning ordinance that I wanted to note. And with one exception, staff has accepted the request that the applicant has proposed. The applicant originally proposed a total of four monument signs, four multi-tenant monument signs along McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway. And the council may recall the Goodyear Center Point final PAD. The same request was made, a very similar project on the directly east of the site. And staff recommended that only one monument sign should be needed on Pebble Creek Parkway due to the proximity of the development to I-10 and just the short amount of space on Pebble Creek Parkway. There's plenty of visibility from I-10. They also have, would have two monument signs on McDowell Road. And the third point being that Goodyear Center Point, which was approved across the street, was approved for two multi-tenant monument signs on McDowell Road and one on Pebble Creek Parkway. The planning commission agreed with this as well and is recommending that only three monument signs be permitted with this center. Staff has placed a stipulation number 11 to limit that multi-tenant monument sign. The applicant is also requesting approval, I mentioned the freeway pylon sign. The subject property contains 25 acres, has approximately 1,800 feet of frontage along I-10. In addition, it's important to note that the owner owns approximately 25 acres to the west, immediately west of this development. And in the future, we will likely see phase two of this center come in. It is not anticipated that the types of uses planned for the adjoining development would necessitate an additional freeway pylon sign or identification of this, of this center. And staff has recommended that only one freeway sign would be given to this applicant. Staff finds that the applicant has demonstrated an acceptable level of conformance with the design guidelines that are outlined in the zoning ordinance. With that, I would conclude the presentation by staff. Staff is available to answer any questions that you might have. The applicant is also available, and the applicant's architect is also available if there's any questions.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Cavalier, and members of the council. I'm Justin with CSRHL Design with the Architects Engineered for this project. I just, I'll be brief in my presentation. I'm just very happy to bring this project Pebble Creek Marketplace to the city of Goodyear. As Brett said, we've been working diligently with staff to bring a top-notch project to the city of Goodyear. We, we were a planning commission about a month ago and voted unanimously approval for this. We're very proud of our design, what we bring to the city of Goodyear, and very eager to start. We are in, just so you know, we are working on permit drawings for the Arizona Tile, and soon hereafter, after approval, we'll be submitting for a permit for that phase one. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Comments from the public? Okay. We'll work the ordinance for rezoning first. And can I ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please?
Ordinance 0710, providing for conditional rezoning of approximately 25 acres located at the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Pebble Creek Parkway from the preliminary planned area development zoning district to the final planned area development zoning district for mixed-use commercial development known as Pebble Creek Village Marketplace, adopting supplementary zoning map number 05225 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Again, this is on the rezone, not the pylon sign. Can I have a motion to approve the ordinance, please?
I move we approve the ordinance as read by the city clerk.
Motion from Councilmember Lord, and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier, open for discussion on council. Councilmember Lord?
Yes. While I appreciate all your cooperation, you've worked with staff. I know you've had some difficulties off and on, but you've done a very good job with this. But I do have a very strong comment to make. If you go to your book, your example of the Arizona Tile company, and you notice the elements that they use in their building materials, you see, i.e., I don't know if you want to call it tile, rock, or whatever it is. That's on page 85. And then you go to the next page on 88, and you look at the other buildings, and we don't really have any of those elements in it at all. Basically, what we have is paint, or stain. And I personally would like to see us have a little different type of elements in some of these buildings. This is the gateway to the city center. And I know, I looked at the guidelines, the overlay, and I know you're following right to what the overlay, but I said to staff, I think we need to up that overlay. We're going to have some very distinctive development. And I don't think this is that distinctive. I think the roof line is fine, but I just would like to see something else.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Lord. Definitely, I appreciate your comments. I just want to make sure that, that you understand, one of the things with Arizona Tile with the design, and we were the architects for that as well, is obviously the amount of slate that you see, just clarification on there, is, is part of their identity, is what they actually manufacture and sell. And I just want to make sure that I make it clear that cost was never a factor of trying to incorporate that slate into our shops and our, and our majors, anchors, and so forth. It was just trying to, you know, bring our own identity to the rest of the palette while still maintaining a uniqueness and complimentary.
I understand what you're saying on that, and that, I can understand that concept with the slate. I still feel, you know, I don't, you haven't been in here when we talked to Wells Fargo. They had a design, and we held them to it. We said, no, it's not good enough. We need a little more different building element added to it. We did it with Vestar. How long did we talk about Vestar? And I'm just saying, I think that you could work with staff in some components throughout these buildings and add some additional, we call it in sales bells and whistles, but I don't know what you do in construction.
Through the mayor, Councilmember Lord. I think if, we could definitely work with staff and Brett to bring in some of the slate into some of our features, you know, without overdoing it completely, but I think we can.
Whatever element.
Yeah, we can certainly.
You're the designer.
We can certainly work with staff, and I think we can come to a mutual agreement.
So just so I understand, the architectural content of Arizona Tile, you'd like that spread throughout the?
It doesn't have to be just that. It has to be some kind of material element that could be, it could be block, it could be slate, it could be anything, but what we basically got is, is paint and stucco. And if you go through the city, we've had that since, what? When was the first shopping center built on Litchfield Park Road? That's, that's stucco and paint. And I'm just saying, we're in a different century now, and we need to add something to the buildings that says that.
And again, through the mayor, Councilmember Lord, you know, the only difference in between the two buildings is, it is the slate. We do have the split face on the Arizona Tile. We do have the split face on the shops and the, and the junior anchors.
The roof line of slate.
Yeah, and the roof line is obviously used, there's definitely an identity with both of them. So I think working with staff, we can definitely bring some elements of the slate. Because again, we don't want to bring in something that's completely different, like a completely different stone. So I think it's one of those things that we can bring in some sort of slate that complements.
Be great.
And again, without overdoing it, I think we can definitely work with Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holland?
Just a question about the traffic, since it's, I'd like to have either the member of the staff or yourself kind of explain about the traffic pattern. I know that you said it would be right in only off Pebble Creek Parkway. Is that, is that so Brett? Because that's going to be such a busy, a busy area with the shopping center there, and I know there'll be traffic lights, et cetera, but just trying to figure out what the traffic pattern is going to be.
Correct. Through the mayor, Councilmember Holland. This drive, let me start here with the first drive off of Pebble Creek. This is a right-in, right-out only. Obviously, we have a median on Pebble Creek. This drive here off of McDowell, it is a right-in, right-out only as well with a median. This is a full turning movement. And again, we're the architects for the Suncor piece just north, and we've been working diligently with staff as well. And this, this intersection, I'm sorry, not intersection, but this drive coincides with the Suncor, and it is proposed to be signalized, so there's a full turning movement. This drive in here is a right-in, right-out with a left in. And just so you know, one of the reasons we've been working diligently with staff is the fact that this is part of the Roosevelt Derogation District. We are crossing that. So again, we have a right-in, right-out, and a left in.
Okay. All right.
Vice Mayor.
The only thing I can say on this, it looks pretty fair. The only thing I can say on this that I would like to see changed is the more pedestrian-friendly out here parking areas, because there, there should be sidewalks out in those parking lots. I don't know what those openings are. Are those, are those sidewalks out to the, I can't tell on this, I can't tell in the book either. It'd be nice to have the, between the buildings and the parking areas, some kind of walkways, so that'd be a little more pedestrian-friendly.
Through the mayor, Vice Mayor Cavalier would, and again, I'm trying to...
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, this, this exhibit will show definitely where all the pedestrian connections are.
Just point out where those are, if you have them in there.
You bet. Again, we have, every, every retail pad has a connection one way or another to other retail paths. For instance, let's start off here by this, we actually have a boulevard effect with double connections that then distribute each other to the east and to the west. So here, we have a pedestrian connection that connects to these other retail paths. This retail pad connects to the trellis on the corner and obviously to the public right away. And one of the things that we work with staff was the fact that we incorporated this 10-foot, it's actually 12-foot wide meandering sidewalk with landscape on both sides that connect all the way to the junior anchors. And, and again, down through here, and then it radiates to, so one of the things is we definitely try to connect every single person.
Just a question. When do you, assuming permits go well in the site plan, when would you expect Arizona Tile to start up business?
Hoping just as soon as possible.
Again, the reason I'm asking, we're going to have them all, we think, in early 2009. What's your timing?
My guess is we'd be ready to make some middle here for, for first review for Arizona Tile in about three to four weeks. With the timing, and again, staff can interject, I would say that in, hopefully in about three months, we're, we have a permit for construction. And I believe they have a sixth to seventh month construction schedule. So again, we'd be looking at somewhere in the middle of '08, late '08.
Cool.
Nice.
So, and again, just so you know, one of the things is our development package has a lot of the shops with, with a design, but just so you know, WM Grace was our client, also can, has ownership of these various shops. So what you see is what you're going to get, that's going to be part of the phase one as well. Obviously, it's going to be following subsequent to Arizona Tile, but basically what you see is what you're going to, what you're going to get, and we're going to be following soon thereafter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then, further discussion? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Susa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
S70.
Okay, we'll now go to D, and we've had the staff presentation, the comments from the public. Call for a motion on the special use permit for the pylon sign.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve a special use permit for one freeway pylon sign within the Pebble Creek Village Marketplace final PAD.
Second?
I have a motion from Councilmember Antoniak, and a second from Councilmember Lord, it's open for discussion. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Sousa.
Mr. Mayor, I thought that in order to have a pylon sign, you have to have thirty-eight, thirty acres of construction.
Through the mayor, councilmember Sousa. This is actually based on WM Grace owns fifty acres.
I kind of figured that.
Yeah, and we're following here soon thereafter for the Phase Two of it. And that's going to be a component of multifamily hotel office. So again, like Brett indicated, there is no need, and he stipulated that we would only get one freeway pylon sign for the entire fifty acres, which is what ultimately will be built out.
Let me ask staff a question. If we make this concession for twenty-five acres, okay, are we going to be bombarded in the future by other builders for twenty-five acres or ten acres?
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Sousa, do need to note that our zoning ordinance was revised recently. The provision was changed. Before, we tried to outline a set of parameters whereby if you, if you, if you had enough frontage and you had enough acreage, it looked like you would be able to get a sign. Now, we have implemented a set of design standards and placed the burden on the applicant to show us why they need the sign, force them to show what a conceptual rendering of what the signage will look like, and they have to show how it fits in with the center architecturally, how it will not have a negative impact on the surrounding development and the community. And so that, that specific acreage number was revised, and the applicant has followed the design guidelines for freeway pylon signs in the zoning ordinance. But in the future, each freeway pylon sign is comprehensively reviewed against all of the design guideline criteria in the zoning ordinance. And one of, specifically, what we looked at in this case was the amount of frontage that they have adjacent to I-ten, and we also talked a lot in the planning commission meetings about adjacent signage, where those signs will be located in proximity to this one.
Okay. This change now, does it create less or more pylon signs than we anticipated originally along I-ten, within the five-mile corridor?
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Sousa, I personally think it makes it harder to get any freeway pylon signs, because it forces the applicant to justify why they need one, and the guidelines for how they look are more strict.
Well, you know, I made a comment when Australia Falls showed their pylon sign. And I was hoping that everybody that put a pylon sign along I-ten would follow that type of design, because it's attractive. This, to me, is not attractive. This is straight up and does nothing to create my interest. You know, I just, all I have to do is travel east of here and take a look at the signs, and this is about the same as those. And it's not attractive at all. So I grant you that possibly the Pebble Creek Marketplace, the Village Marketplace, needs a pylon sign for the twenty-five acres, and granted, I'll go along with the twenty-five across the road. But I would hope that it would be better designed in that, the patterns, those that are structured for Australia Falls, which I think is perfect and much more attractive than this.
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Sousa. And I think that's one of the things that we can certainly work with staff, that if we need to.
I would hope that you take a look at that.
We can certainly look at that.
You know, this is, this is a box.
And again, our intent was not to bring in another freeway pylon sign that was not attractive by any means. And I just want to add the fact that, you know, one of the stipulations that we had at planning commission was to shift the pylon sign farther west, which we have. And the other thing is, one of the things that we've given as well is the, the, the project, which is the Evergreen, the name of the project escapes me here, but which is on the southeast corner, that actually got approved for an eighty-foot-high sign with five hundred and four square feet. We're actually sixty-three feet high with four hundred and fifty square feet. But I completely understand in the fact that we'll work with staff to make sure that you get an attractive sign.
I trust that Brett will.
I, I, I trust that as well.
Councilmember Lord.
I was just going to compliment, because it had the logo. I'm going to shock me, because we've talked about.
Design. The logo is one thing, but design is another.
Well, then, let's make sure he doesn't take that logo off, huh?
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Lord, definitely, we won't take the logo out, and hopefully.
That is a given.
Hopefully, future will follow suit for that.
They're pan-channel letters, though. I mean, these aren't, these aren't what we see with Barnes &amp; Noble and, you know, big, big plexiglass. I mean, you're cutting out letters out of.
We're actually, Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Antoniak, it's actually routed, yes.
Yeah.
The name on there, that's correct.
Right. So it's not as.
This doesn't do it justice.
I don't think you do justice showing it this way, because you don't, this looks like plastic panels out there versus something a little bit more creative.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
I thought they had you on the Goodyear logo.
I did too, Dick. You're shocking me on this one.
I was sold on it, just through your fall sign.
How much on the right?
Very attractive.
I like it. I thought it looked good. Liked the logo on it. It's good.
Thank you.
Private citizen Gelzer. Commissioner Gelzer. Commissioner.
I want to address this to councilman Sousa, that at the last planning commission meeting, an applicant tried to slip in a thirty-foot pylon sign, and the commissioned staff told him no, and the commission emphatically told him no. And we will do our diligence for you. And so, while I believe in commerce and I am a free-market person, we'll get something for it. You got the, you got the logo this time, and we'll get a little bit better design, because the accountants, the clients, the architects will work with them. But I want you to be assured that P&amp;Z will do its due diligence for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Hey, seeing no further comment, all in favor of the motion, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Close. You guys have it, seven-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next three items are related to Bennett Estates. Katie Wilken is going to present. And first will be the development agreement, then the rezone, and then the preliminary plat. Katie, you'll do all three, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll take individuals. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council?
Two.
Bennett Estates is located on the west side of Saraville Avenue between Van Buren and Yuma Road. It is bounded by Legacy Ranch to the north, Wildflower Ranch to the east, Curtis Commons to the south, and Canyon Trails to the west. The applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural urban to single-family residential. The general plan shows this area as low-density residential, so the R1-10 zoning is consistent with the general plan. The subject property is surrounded by single-family residential and will not have a negative impact on the adjacent property. The applicant is proposing subdividing the thirty-three acres into fifty-three residential lots. These lots will be developed as custom home sites and range in size from twelve thousand to eighteen thousand square feet. This development will be a gated community with the main gated access at Saraville Avenue, which will be a right-in, right-out entrance exit. A second point of gated access is located off of Harrison Street on the south side of the development. Harrison Street will be a future signalized intersection, which will allow left turns into and out of Bennett Estates. There are approximately four acres of open space provided on the site. Tract A, B, E, and F provide large areas of open space that can be utilized for passive recreation and will also include amenities such as cot lots and ramadas. The development agreement with Bennett Estates includes two major items of importance, the first being collecting fees for police and fire operations and maintenance, including Fire Station 184. The second, providing for contributions to the school's districts. This concludes my presentation, and I can take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we've had the staff presentation, and again, we're talking about the development agreement, the rezone, and the preliminary plat. Opportunity now for the applicant. Doesn't have to say anything, doesn't want to. Okay. Any comments from the public? Okay, then we'll move to, ask the clerk to read the resolution for the development agreement by title only, please.
Resolution 07-1134, approving a development agreement with A and N Saraville and Arizona Limited Liability Corporation for developing thirty-three acres of land known as Bennett Estates into fifty-three single-family residential lots and five tracks, generally located at the northwest corner of Saraville Avenue and Harrison Street within the city of Goodyear and providing for an effective date.
I have a motion, please.
I move that we adopt resolution 07-1134 as read by the clerk.
Second. I have a motion, councilmember Holland, and a second from councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion. Councilmember Sousa?
Bennett Estates, does it have anything to do with Don Bennett and Associates?
Mayor Kavanaugh, councilmember Sousa, no, it doesn't.
Thank you. Councilmember Holland.
You know, just looking at this and reading the material that was associated with it, I was just surprised to see it's kind of, vice mayor says blocky. I'm not sure I would have used that word, but kind of boring, because I guess, I live in a gated community, and, you know, we're, we're pretty standard houses, but there's a winding through and more character. I guess that's what I was looking for. So just wanted to put that out there and maybe have our person address it, our developer address it. I'd like to defer to that. I guess the word isn't, wasn't imaginative.
Okay. Mayor, council, my name's Leandra Wells, I do the pre-construction coordination. Basically, what our feel was for, this is a gated community, and we wanted people to come in, and with the creation of the cul-de-sacs, you're putting like around four houses that kind of like bring the community together, so they're actually looking at each other. There's kind of a, you know, connection. And yet, they're separated out a little bit, so that it's not like you're, you're kind of, it's, the design is intended to bring the smaller, the smaller groups together, but yet they're a whole. And so that's the reason why we kind of went with the cul-de-sacs every four lots, and of course, we've got the area in the middle there that kind of faces towards them. So we were trying to bring some connectivity to it. But as far as, I'm not quite sure what your concern was, or your.
Well, it just didn't seem to be imaginative enough. It's just like, just squares, one square. I know that it looks like you didn't have a lot to work with, since it was square, but I'm just surprised I didn't see more.
Collinear.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Surprised to see no.
More curves and giving it a little more character. And I guess I've just been kind of surprised with this.
Well, fortunately, we already have developments that are pre-platted before us in the north and in the south, where they don't, it really, there's no connection between them except for to the south there. I think that's Harrison Street, where we were able to connect. But the rest of it, we weren't able to connect with the other communities. They've already got surrounding.
Yeah, right.
Even though it doesn't look like it, these are already subdivided and platted out.
Right, so you didn't have any.
And there's no connectivity with other communities.
Infru- into those other areas, you're just.
Right. And we're also trying to get the gated community feel, you know, where we want the market to be a little bit different. We want people to come in and build those custom homes and get the seclusiveness of being a gated community. So, I mean, it actually lent itself for that purpose very well, because there's no way to connect to the other, the other plaques don't allow it, really. Except for where we could, where we did, and go to the south, we did.
Well, I was really speaking just within the Bennett Estates community itself. I was just surprised to see it laid out so squarely. You know, usually, there's a little, I use the word rambling, but, you know, there's more, there's more windy. It's, it looks like a community. This looks square, so I don't know. I don't want to belabor it, but.
I will say one thing, as a former Wildflower Ranch resident, where we all know that's exactly what this is, but at a larger scale, I could appreciate, I appreciated it for having children and the fact that they were in a cul-de-sac. Their, the connectivity to each track of park area is convenient for that. And sometimes, when you have so many curves, sometimes cars don't always see people on the road. And so, in this smaller of a subdivision, I think it's okay.
All right, so are you saying, councilwoman, that it's wide open and that it gives you, gains you more visibility into the community?
Certainly, yes.
And I think that was the part that I was kind of surprised at, because it seemed to be so wide open into the cul-de-sacs, and it's not like the winding look that I was used to, so.
Councilmember Lord.
With all due respect, councilwoman, actually, these are great home sites. And I have to tell you, my experience as a sales rep selling many communities, they will have absolutely zero problems selling those entire outside ring of those homes. People want cul-de-sacs, and they feel safe in cul-de-sacs, whether they have children or they don't have children. They don't have to worry about the number of cars coming by, it's just the residents going into the cul-de-sacs. So when you're looking at a square piece of property, there's really only so much you can do. And on a marketing standpoint, they certainly want to see as many houses they can build within the guidelines of what their, what their desire is. So to you, it might look square, but really, when those houses get built, it's going to be quite a classy neighborhood.
I wasn't really referring to so much the cul-de-sacs as I was just the straight, the linear streets and squareness of it. I was square, I was kind of, but understand what you're saying.
Thank you.
Any more questions for me?
Okay. Call for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass seven-zero.
Okay, we'll now move to the rezone, and we've had the staff presentation, we've had comments from the public. Could I have the clerk read the ordinance by title only, please?
Order eight F?
Yes.
Ordinance 07-1062, providing for conditional zoning of thirty-three acres of property from the agricultural urban zoning district to the single-family residential zoning district for development known as Bennett Estates, generally located at the northwest corner of Saraville Avenue and Harrison Street, adopting supplementary zoning map number 06007 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing an effective date.
Could I have a motion?
Mayor, I move it up. Ordinance number 07-1062, as read by the clerk.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier, second from councilmember Holland. Open for discussion. Have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass seven-zero.
We'll now move to the preliminary plat for Bennett Estates. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the preliminary plat for Bennett Estates subdividing approximately thirty-three acres into fifty-three residential lots generally located at the northwest corner of Saraville and Harrison.
Second.
Motion from councilmember Antoniak and a second from councilmember Lord. Discussion. All in favor, signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it, seven-zero. Okay, thank you. Next five items are all related to the Sonoran annexation and the Amaranth development. Harvey Cross will start, and he and Brett will take turns. This, again, five items, five subjects here. First is the annexation ordinance, then we go to the development agreement, rezone of fifty-nine hundred plus acres, rezone of almost seven hundred acres, and then the preliminary plat. And will you brief them, you'll take them all, correct? You and Brett?
Yes, Mayor.
And then, and then we'll break them down independently.
Yes.
Okay, we'll ask for the. Okay, we'll ask for the applicant again after Harvey, please.
Mayor, council members of the audience, um, first, before I get into my formal presentation, a lot of work has gone into the negotiations of the development agreement and the annex, processing of an annexation, uh, this pretty much represents the, I would venture to say the largest annexation the, that the city has processed, at least in modern times, I think in the, in the nineteen-eighties, and the city manager can correct me, the, the Estreya Mountain Ranch annexation was, uh, over twenty thousand acres, and, um, the property to the north was about twelve thousand acres, I believe, so, um, we're talking a, a much larger area this evening, and, um, I'd like to also, um, I'd like to thank, um, the city clerk's office for assisting in the processing, there was a lot of accounting of signatures, and a lot of time went into that, uh, with the assistance of the developer, both Dee and, and, and were very helpful in that regard, also, the, the police chief and the fire chief and the public works director were assisted and gave us a great deal of input into the negotiations with the development agreement. With that said, I will proceed, uh, first, the regional context, uh, for those in the audience, um, the, the yellow is, uh, current, uh, Goodyear boundaries, um, city limits, the black, large black area is the area that is the, um, general plan amendment that was processed by the council on January eighth, uh, this year, the Patterson Road alignment is the southern boundary of the planning area, it's bounded on the west by the Sonoran Desert National Monument, the green, which is BLM land, uh, the south is, if I could get a steady hand, I won't be a surgeon anytime soon, this is state route two, two thirty-eight, and approximately four miles south of state route two thirty-eight is the southern boundary of the planning area, and then the, uh, east boundary is the Pinell Maricopa County line. There is one island, county island, that's being created, the blue dash line represents Avondale's planning area, the red line that comes down represents the, um, a proposed route for the state route three oh three, and it's, it, uh, we show it intersecting with IA to the south. So, I will proceed here, uh, wrong way. Background, um, the city initiated the general plan amendment that I, I showed you, and the reason we did that, this is approximately ninety-five, um, square miles, over sixty thousand acres, um, primary motivation was to manage the north-south transportation route, uh, from the city, we, we wanted to eliminate the potential for a cul-de-sac at the, uh, where Estreya Mountain Ranch terminates, uh, with only, uh, prop, uh, with only traffic exiting to the north, corner of an outlet to the south, this provided us that opportunity. The majority of the property within this general planning area, approximately fifty percent, thirty-one thousand acres, is federal land, that's open space, that will be preserved as open space, and there's certain, uh, animal migratory corridors that will be preserved with this, uh, planning area. The, um, there's also, uh, economic development opportunities with this annexation, somewhat long-term, the, along state route two thirty-eight is, is a Union Pacific Railroad, and there's some opportunities for industrial development, uh, in that corridor, in addition, once, um, the freeway, three oh three, has extended south, there's opportunities for additional commercial development as the city grows to the south. Montage Holdings, uh, has requested that the city annex approximately ten thousand acres, they have done a land assembly to develop a master plan community, which they have named Amaranth, uh, in this Mobile area, and, um, they have requested annexation of this ten thousand acres. Um, the, the, the crux of our negotiations with the development agreement, and when I go, I'll go over that in a little bit of detail, is that growth should pay for growth, and I'll demonstrate that, demonstrate that as we discuss some of the concepts in the, in the, uh, development agreement. Uh, this is the general plan amendment, and there's the breakdown of the land uses, I believe you're familiar with this, and I won't belabor this. Additional background, uh, council authorized staff to initiate the annexation on October twenty-third, council approved a pre-annexation agreement with Montage Holdings on December four. Um, the, the state selection board, um, approved the annexation of state lands on December eight, two thousand and six, uh, as you recall, the, the only way that the city could, uh, annex the ten thousand acres that are owned by Montage was that, that state land, there's intervening state land, approximately five thousand acres of state land had to be annexed, so, state policy requires that we, that we receive, uh, approval from the state, the state selection board is composed, I believe, of the governor, the state treasurer, and attorney general, and then they have delegated the responsibility of the state land commissioner to negotiate a pre-annexation agreement with the city, which we have done, and the council has, uh, approved. A blank annexation petition and map was filed on December fifteenth of last year, uh, the city held the required public hearing on January eighth, council that same evening approved the general plan amendment that I showed you earlier on, on that evening, notices were sent to private property owners in the, in the ninety-five square mile area to gauge the level of support for annexation, uh, the reason for that was, is, um, wanted to see who wanted to be annexed, if they did not want to be annexed, we were going to accommodate those property owners and remove them from the annexation, um, you cannot, uh, decrease the size of the, the map, um, once you've started collecting signatures, so this is somewhat of an informal, um, uh, vote of the, the residents and the property owners in the area. Uh, based upon that assessment of interest, the annexation map, um, was reduced to sixty-six point, uh, eight, uh, square miles, um, so it was reduced from ninety-five square miles to sixty-six point eight square miles, approximately forty-two thousand acres, um, there was, there were three, uh, primarily two proper, well, there may be three property owners, two large property owners that did not want to be annexed, Waste Management and Glenn Weinberger, who owns a construction landfill, and there was another property owner that was on the, um, southern boundary of the, of the development that did not, uh, of the planning area that did not want to be annexed, and, and we, um, adhered to his wishes. What is the criteria for annexation, the majority of the property owners within the boundaries must sign the petition, there's multiple petitions that are mailed out to all the property owners, we received the petitions back, uh, need to have more than fifty percent of the property owners, um, signing the petition, also, fifty-one percent of the property owners with the, uh, the majority of the assessed valuation, uh, must sign the petition, that, since, uh, Montage Holdings had the majority of the properties and the parcels within the area, that was a fairly, uh, easy criteria to meet. Uh, another major one was you cannot create county islands, uh, with an annexation, which we have not done. And the annexation, if approved this evening, the, the ordinance would go into effect thirty days after council approval. This is the annexation map that, um, uh, that was, uh, that's being proposed this evening, excuse me, the shaded areas obviously are the ones that are, uh, being, uh, are being requested for annexation. The areas in the, the white, the large, let me give you a little, find my cursor here, um, this area is the landfills that I referenced, the large white area, so, in order to not create an island, we had to have an outlet to the, to, uh, county or other properties, so this is the outlet, so if this was closed, then it would be considered an island, since it has an outlet, it's not an island, this is, Lusana has an airstrip in the area, um, and this is, this is not a county island since it has an outlet down to the south.
How was the outlet created?
Mayor, uh, council member, uh, so, so, the, well, since we cannot annex, well, since we adhere to their wishes not to annex this, we could not annex this area, so we had to come up with an outlet, so, we, we looked at what other combination of properties, looking at BLM lands, uh, what other lands are available that couldn't be annexed, and, and just did a, a small sliver out to the, to the county property, it wasn't scientific, you just, uh, just looked at the combination of property owners that wanted to be annexed versus those that did not want to be annexed. The annexation details, um, there are seven hundred and forty-nine separate parcels within the annexed area, and, uh, Montage has assembled four hundred and eighty parcels, so they own forty-eight, four hundred and eighty of the, uh, seven hundred and forty-nine, and they're continuing to assemble other properties, and these numbers, in fact, have gone up a little bit since, uh, this PowerPoint was prepared, uh, there are a hundred and eighty-four unique property owners, so, in other words, we need ninety-three signatures that would represent a majority, and today, when I prepared this, uh, we had a hundred and thirteen point four-two, so we, uh, which represents sixty-one percent, a little over sixty-one percent of the property, uh, property owners, uh, homeowners that wanted to be, uh, signed the petition, we do have, um, I did receive the petitions today, I think we're up to a hundred and sixteen, the reason there's fractional votes, uh, it's a fractional vote because you may have multiple owners on a parcel, so, you may not receive all of the signatures from one particular property, so, if you receive like one out of, uh, three signatures that are required on a, uh, on a piece of property, you count that fraction, so that's why there's fractional votes are allowed, fractional votes are allowed, um, per state law. There are thirty-seven buildings or houses within the annexed area, we made an attempt to annex as many, uh, homeowners, those that actually, um, own property and reside in the property as possible, and thirty-seven of them, and that represented eighty-four residents, and of those eighty-four, twenty-four, it's actually twenty-five now, I think, it just went up, uh, of the thirty-seven owners, signed the petition, so approximately sixty-five percent of the, of the individuals that, um, live in the area and own property in the area actually signed the petition. The, this total assessed valuation, which you, which you, how you evaluate the annexation is over three point one million, um, dollars, and, um, since, obviously, since Montage owns the majority of the, the property, uh, we had two point four, uh, million of value sign the petition, which represented, um, over seventy-eight percent of the, the property, so, we met the two tests of annexation, majority of the property owners, uh, over sixty percent, and over seventy-eight percent, um, on the assessed valuation, and we have created no county islands. This represents the shaded areas, uh, within the, um...
Harvey, I have a question like that.
Okay.
Harvey, what was the count in Mobile itself, the city of Mobile, do you know?
Um, Mayor, um, Councilmember Susan, the, the count within Mobile, the cit, Mobile is, uh, is basically an unincorporated area, um, where the residents, they're somewhat, they live in various areas, there's one enclave of residents, I believe, um, there's several residents here, this could probably correct me if I'm wrong, I think that most of them live just south of state route two thirty-eight and about this area here, um, majority of, I believe, but there are, there are some that live over here, and some that live over here, but there's, there's various properties, there are large acreages, and so, it's kind of scattered, it's not, um, they're not, um, not a, it's not an incorporated community. So the shaded area represents those areas that have been assembled by Montage for the master plan development, their first phase, which, um, Brett will talk about a little bit, is the six, six hundred and ninety acres, which is just right here, so they'll be developing probably from the east to the west. Now we'll go into the development agreement, um, there's, uh, I've divided the development agreement discussion to basically two, two phases, the interim municipal services and permanent municipal services, there are a lot of things today we don't know, and we're entering into, um, as you know, we entered into a pre-annexation agreement that provided a framework for us to enter into future agreements, well, now, this is the, what would I call it, a master development agreement, that kind of sets the stage for the interim services that are going to be provided, and then provides for several other, uh, more agreements that are going to be entered into down the road, so we're entering into basically a, a very long-term relationship with this, with this group, um, Sonoran Valley LLC is the actual entity that the development agreement, uh, we're entering into, but, but we've been, I guess interchangeably calling them Montage Holdings. The first thing is police service, um, the, the area is currently served by, uh, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, and the police chief has negotiated, or is in the process of negotiating an agreement with, um, the sheriff's office to serve the area through an intergovernmental agreement, which will be forthcoming, um, within, within thirty days, and they have agreed to provide the, um, service in the area, and that, at a cost of approximately, uh, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, the, the developer would pay that, uh, cost, that's an annual fee, um, that would be full shift, um, uh, service in the area, um, however, the chief also needs, um, personnel to supervise and coordinate that contract, there will be issues that come, that come up, and so, uh, developer would be funding a police lieutenant, at least fifty percent of the salary and benefits for the police lieutenant, as well as an SUV for the, for the, um, police department, uh, fifty percent of that, uh, to cert, to assist in serving the sheriff's office and, for that area. The ambulance service is provided by Heelabin, and they have the certificate to serve the area, uh, the city won't be in, involved in that, um, service, uh, the area is, uh, in some ways fortunate to have waste management with a landfill, it's very easy to get solid waste service, so that won't be probably an issue, uh, to get solid, um, service from waste management. Interim fire service, uh, probably the, the most challenging of all the issues that we had to deal with was fire service, uh, the area does not have, is basically bare with fire service, so, um, we looked at options on contracting for other entities to serve the area with fire service, there are no other entities, the fire chief has exhausted those opportunities with the Okton, uh, Indian Reservation, the, uh, town of, um, the city of Maricopa, they're not, uh, in a position, or they don't want to, so, the area just cannot be served, um, but there's a commitment that we would provide, uh, a certain level of fire service, twenty-four hour fire service from day one, so the developer would be funding twenty-four hour fire and EMT coverage, uh, from day one of annexation, basically thirty days from now, um, there'll be a, a temporary facility with fire, uh, trained firefighters in the area, and the, the, um, fire department is currently in a recruitment process, if, um, they've already advertised for, uh, new firefighters to be hired, and, but until that can happen, the developers will fund the overtime necessary for those firefighters that are existing in our, in our force today to serve the area, um, six firefighters up to twelve months, I believe in twelve months, we should be able to hire, um, eight qualified firefighters with EMT certification, plus a battalion chief, um, the, the funding for a, a battalion chief. In addition to that, um, as I indicated, there'll be a modular building with an emergency generate, generator with furnishings up to fifty thousand dollars, um, a shade structure for the fire engine, and then if a, a permanent fire station is not constructed within a year, then the developer would, um, provide for an enclosure for that, uh, fire engine, it's a type-three fire engine, not to exceed three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. In addition, an incident command vehicle, not to exceed a hundred and fifteen thousand, um, one of the, another area that, that is challenging is communications, there, um, two-way public safety radio and communications need to be provided to the area, and the developer's working on, on that, and will provide that to ninety percent of the property for ninety percent of the time, um, as for interim services. So you wrap these interim services, what I, I, we call into a service cost budget, so, um, the developer is committing to, um, fund a service cost budget, so the city will prepare, uh, an annual service cost budget with all of these operation and maintenance costs that are directly related to survey, serving this, this newly annexed area, and, um, those are the costs that will be reimbursed by the developer. And those are the costs that will be reimbursed by the developer. We give the budget to the developer and he reviews and provides comments. We've agreed to several things that we've already talked about, the contract with the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, the eight firefighters, the overtime, the shade structure. Those are the types of things that will be in the service cost budget. The master developer will make quarterly payments to the city based upon that budget that they review. And we'll reconcile that at the end of each year based upon what the actual expenses are serving the area. Now this reimbursement will commence upon annexation and will go for the earlier of seven years or when the average revenues generated in the area exceed the expenditures by 100 percent for more than two years. So there's an incentive for the developer to seed the area with commercial development, industrial development, to generate revenue. And the revenue is from sales tax, it can be from construction sales tax, it can be from property tax that's generated in the area. So that'll be used as the parameters. Now that is not, the revenues don't offset the expenditures, it's just used as a means to decide when the service cost budget terminates. So no later than seven years, but when the revenues exceed the expenditures.
So basically, we're going to have a separate budget for that area, the annexed area?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, well, it will be a separate budget, it'll be a, Larry will probably have to give you the technical details, but I imagine it'll be a fund, much like maybe the general fund, it'll be a fund within the overall budget.
It'll be a fund.
Be monitored accordingly. So that's the crux of the interim services will be wrapped around this service cost Now we go to what we call permanent municipal services. So we've, the large expenditure and the major thing that's needed is the road connection to the Sonoran Valley area, to State Route 238. And in the development agreement, it provides for the developer to fund the design, the construction, including right-of-way acquisition with our assistance through, with BLM, to have a two-lane road extension from Rainbow Valley where it currently terminates at Riggs Road, south to State Route 238. In the pre-annexation agreement, it was required that they do that within three, no later than three years. It's, the developer believes that it can be done in two years and it's in their best interest, obviously, to get it done earlier rather than later. So we're hoping it can be done in two years. There is no city financial participation. If you recall, in the pre-annexation agreement, the city was on the hook for 30 percent of that road, but that was, that is being negated with this master development agreement. And there was, and that was part of the negotiation process. Also, the developer has asked that the city entertain the notion of zonal development fees for the Sonoran Valley area since it is, it'll be pretty much standalone water and sewer system, it'll have a standalone, as I indicate, effluent system. The transportation system will be connected to EMR, but there may be some development fees associated with that road construction. So to be able to do a development fee study, you have to have a capital improvement program and do a study. The developer will fund the study as well as the CIP for adoption of a zonal development fee. So that would be coming as a recommendation to the mayor and council. There's also, as I indicated, the area, the developer is very active in assembling other properties in the area. They've already assembled 10, over 10,000 acres, but they're continually reaching out and creating, developing, acquiring more. And it's in the, I believe in the city's and the area's best interest for having a master plan community where infrastructure can be planned accordingly and sized accordingly and roads can be connected appropriately. And so in the development agreement, it provides for additional lands to be added as Montage Holdings acquires those. And they have to be contiguous, they would be added to the development agreement. And they would receive the same rights and benefits that the other lands, the 10,000 acres has today. That doesn't mean that they don't have to go through the zoning process, they still have to go through the normal zoning process and plating process, but they, they would be incorporated into the development agreement.
Is that only specific to the map that was provided this evening? In the development agreement, that specifically calls out Exhibit D as the expansion area?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Antoni, that's correct, yes.
Okay. So it's not as if developer can go and get 10,000 more contiguous acres and it would fit into this? That's within these bounds?
That's correct. There are also, it's contemplated that a community facilities district would be formed since we've got a massive amount of infrastructure that has to be provided, that that would be a financing mechanism. It was also addressed in the pre-annexation development agreement. It's not a requirement that the city form one, it's just that our normal process, they would make application, the city council would entertain the formation of a CFD for financing public infrastructure. The developer would also be funding the design, engineering and installation and permitting of a water and wastewater system as well as an effluent system in the area. And it would be a standalone system since our system is, there's quite a bit of territory between our existing utility system and this area. Also, the development agreement provides for the terms of a transfer of a utility system to the city. It's anticipated this would be a, not a private utility system, it'll be a public utility system. Initially, it may be operated by others, maybe the details of that have not been worked out. We would not receive any user fees until it's transferred to the city. However, prior to the 500th permit, we would have an agreement in place where the terms would be of that utility system being transferred to us. And the operational and responsibility of the utility system, when the initial years, the first 500 building permits would be funded, any deficits in the operational cost associated with that utility system would be funded by the developer for the first 500 building permits.
Would we have to monetarily buy?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, the, no, the agreement specifically says that that would be transferred at no cost to the city. We would receive this system at no cost. We would assume the operational maintenance cost of that utility, but we'd also receive user fees when we acquire the system.
Who would be responsible for the rate setting early on in that?
The mayor and council. It'd be a public utility, the mayor and council.
Prior to the installations being turned over to us? If you attach a end user with a meter, are we going to be charging the going rate at the given time unless we establish some sort of zone?
I believe the answer is yes.
Now, with the 500 building, 500 people that are existing, the 500 residents that exist, would we be able to go back and charge those people user fees?
Mayor, council, the user fees, no, the, we would start charging user fees when we acquire it, we would receive those user fees. Whoever's operating the system, the developer's operating from day one, they would charge, they would be charging the...
Now you're getting at the very heart of my question. Make this crystal clear. Who is going to set the rate? I mean, if it's a private utility company that's going down there, I assume it's not. I mean, if you're putting installations in, we're going to be doing the billing, we're going to control the rates. Therefore, there's not an artificial adjustment at the time of assumption of that infrastructure. Okay.
That's correct.
Otherwise, you'd be going to the ACC and establishing a whole new utility.
The, I thought the question might have been something, did Councilmember Sousa, are you talking about the 84 residents that are existing in the area? Not those, okay.
We're talking about, the issuance of 500 building permits, okay? But those are, let's assume that those are built. Now, okay, we assume, we assume the facility, the water system, okay? Can we go back now, are we going to be able to go back and bill those 500 people, residents?
No, no, Mayor, you're already building.
Even though we're not operating.
They're paying already. The 500 building permits is that, is when, is that they will fund any operational deficits up to 500 building permits.
So I don't, on the liability, I don't know, I mean, the water main breaks during that 500 time period, you're the one replacing it, you're dealing with it, but I'm billing you, I'm billing the resident for that service, or the water meter for that service.
That's correct.
So they will have already, so essentially at that point, we'll figure out whether or not it pays for itself.
Right. The, one of the things that this developer has proposed, in which we've encouraged other developers to do, but really none have taken this environmental step, is to create, to fund and install a non-podable water system in addition to a potable water system, which we think is very admirable and very good for the community and the environment to have an effluent system for open space areas and for right-of-way. So we're very happy about that. That's for maximum reuse. Also, an item I know that's near and dear to many of your hearts, is that they've agreed to install sprinkler system in their homes, primarily because of the distance.
Mr. O is involved in this.
There is a caveat to the agreement in terms of the sprinkler system. What the developers ask for is a level playing field. So if we, if other developers come in the area, other builders, developers acquire property and want to build new houses, they want us to also encourage, if not require, these new builders and developers to install sprinkler systems so they're not at a competitive disadvantage, which I think most of you, I see you shaking your head, so I probably would agree with that concept. So if, but we, if we, for some reason, some future council doesn't allow that, that will allow them the opportunity to get out of not installing sprinklers any longer. Another one is when there is a level of fire service that's equal to or greater than what we have in our existing community, it also would allow them the opportunity to get out of putting sprinkler systems in their houses. Since we have some permanent fire stations with the type of distribution we have up in the existing community, then they're able to opt out of fire sprinklers.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Harvey, couple slides back, you were discussing the interim fire service. I was waiting for a question-answer session, I didn't know we were going to jump right in there, I apologize.
We are going to have one, we're going to have a question. What we're going to do is, this is way too complex to do all five of these things at one time. As soon as you're finished here, let's open it up to Steve, okay, and the public, and then let's discuss the first two items. Is that all right?
So I'll wait?
Yeah. Are you about finished?
I'm sorry, I'll be really quick. I guess I am, yes. I'm done. Any questions?
Is that it?
I wanted to make sure everyone understood it, this is a big issue.
If that's not your last slide, keep going. Because you're answering a lot of questions as you're going through this.
We have, the agreement also provides for a separate fire and EMT services and facilities to be, to be a study and an agreement that has to be done prior to the 500th building permit. We also have a public safety service agreement that needs to be, a study that needs to be done, recommendations formulated, and then an agreement prior to the 500th building permit to address police. And then we have another agreement for communications, permanent communications, a study that needs to be done and an agreement that needs to be done. And there are triggers in the development agreement that provides for when that needs to be done. And if it doesn't get done, there's a hammer there that we have. And the ultimate hammer in each one of these is we withhold building permits. And that's usually something developers and builders are not real fond of. And then a public facilities plan to address office space and all the other associated things a city needs. And that needs to be done, that needs to be done prior to the 1,000th building permit. And then the term of the agreement is 30 years. This is a large project, it's going to be built over multiple phases, so it's a 30-year term, it's a little bit longer than we normally do, but the size of it merits this. And then with two options, two 10-year option to extend the agreement. Very quickly, future home builders would receive extensive notification on noise, odor, dust, litter from the landfill operations and the railroad, of course. There are some private airstrips as well as the Luthon, so they'll receive notification that has that in his zoning. There's also, the developer has entered into a separate agreement, if the mayor and council recalls, to provide up to $300,000 for plan review and permitting services. And then there's a, the development also provides for major and minor amendments, the PAD, and those amendments must conform to the general plan. I do have some additional stipulation, amendments to the development agreement. Unfortunately, I hate to, I know, make something more complex than it already is, but there are three changes. The representatives of waste management raised some concerns with the development agreement. And just to give you, the mayor and council, some background from our previous discussion at the general plan level, there's negotiations that have been going on between waste management and the developer for an exchange of property to relocate the entrance of the landfill operations for the Butterfield landfill. And within these negotiations, it raised some issues that they wanted to address in our development agreement that impacted waste management. So I'll go over those very quickly. The first one, one change that is suggested, you don't have those in front of you, I'll just kind of, I can, I'll just verbalize those and I can have Steve Earl give you...
Can you reference the page number when you're doing so? On the COAC?
Well, it's not on the COAC, it's at the end of Section A, little section A, triple I. Can you tell what page that's on?
A I.
Page five.
Page five.
So, other development plan, and then you're addressing minor amendment, minor change?
Yeah.
Essentially, the language is, is that with this land swap, the concern was, is that there's an administrative ability to shift some densities around in parcel to parcel. And waste management's concern is, is they don't want residential adjacent to the landfill and neither does the city. So we are, in the development agreement, we're actually providing that no residential uses would be allowed within one-half mile of the Butterfield landfill. And the applicant, the applicant has agreed to that. That's with, primarily within the west, I believe the western side of the landfill. So I'll, that's just generally what it is. So no residential uses within one-half mile of the landfill, that's one change. The second change is...
And that's under?
Triple I.
Triple I, okay.
And another one, 5A double I, is modifications to the internal circulation system that would cause a major realignment of the roadway that serves the two landfills, not only waste management, but the construction landfill that Glenn Weinberger owns, that if there is a change, a major change to that alignment, that we'd be considered a major amendment for purposes of amending the PAD unless the parties agree, both landfill operators agree to that, that change. So basically, we're not going to change the alignment of the roadways that serve those two landfills unless the landfill operators agree to that. That's essentially the second change.
But that really would be between the two parties, right?
It, Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, it would still be a public road that we would, it would have to go through our approval process. So we could do that without conferring with them, I guess we could, but obviously we wouldn't do that. But this gives, this makes the landfill operators... this makes the landfill operators feel good about.
It's more comfortable to have this in writing.
Yes, they feel better about having it in writing. It, it basically is something that we have all, these, these items that I'm going to talk about, we've, we've agreed in concept to them, but we've, we're just basically clarifying and codifying them in the development agreement, so everybody understands this, in case the parties change, you know, we have a 30-year agreement, so as, as the parties change, it's, it's good to have it in writing. The next one's a little bit more complicated, and I apologize for the complexity of this, but in the, in the development agreement, there, as we've talked about, there's regional transportation fees that may be adopted over time to fund the, the road extension. And those, there'll be credits and there'll be reimbursements for that regional road, and those credits would go, and those reimbursements would go to the developer because they funded it. And the development agreement provides for them to receive those credits and reimbursements. However, we, we have been discussing over the last several months, the possibility of waste management annexing their Butterfield landfill in the city, and negotiating a separate pre-annexation agreement with the city, they've been talking to us about it. And they want to make sure that nothing in this agreement provides any limitations on what we can do with waste management in terms of fee reimbursements or anything else. So it, this just kind of frees up the ability of us to enter into waste management, and the developer would waive his rights to any changes in the development fees that would, that would affect waste management. So that's essentially the three changes. And that, I'm sorry, and that's page 19, okay. And that concludes my comments.
But the Butterfield won't be annexed?
Not yet.
It's a, it's a possibility.
It's a possibility, yeah.
There are some additional amendments to some stipulations that waste management asked for, but I was going to have that done through the zoning, that was a zoning issue, so they wanted, so we'll address that in the zoning. If, so that's my, concludes my comments, did you want Brett to come up and talk?
Yeah, I'd like to, I think, I think this is so complex, we need to take the annexation and development agreement.
Yeah, and?
Yes, now it's time for the applicant, and then we'll open it up to the public, and then we'll discuss in council. I'm assuming that you don't want a development agreement, no, you don't want an annexation agreement unless you get a development agreement, right?
That would be correct, sir.
Yeah, so we've sort of got these in a reverse sequence here.
That's all right, Mr. Mayor, I think this is an important element, council, thank you so much. I guess I'd like to start first by saying thank you, thank you to the council, thank you to staff, it's quite obvious after that presentation that they've done a great job for the city, I've not seen or heard of another agreement such as this. But again, it's an unusual step, it's a historical step, and so it's an honor to be here in front of you for this process. I'd also like to make a self-serving comment, and comment about our staff at Montage and all the consultants that have helped, there's been a tremendous amount of effort, thought, and planning that has gone into this, hours and hours of, of effort. And then, another group I'd like to thank, and that's the citizens, there are many citizens here, and representatives of the school district, many of whom would like to speak, and so I'm going to sit down fairly quickly and allow them that opportunity. But again, our gratitude is with you, we had, over time, many issues come up, we, we feel we've kept open to everybody, tried to incorporate everyone, create a sense of community, which I think has been important in Goodyear and the area of Mobile as well. So our thanks for that, there are some other details we can touch on, but would like to open that up from this point on, unless there are any questions.
Any further comments from the applicant?
Okay, and, why don't we ask any comments from waste management? Okay, open to the public now, comments.
Mr. Mayor, I have about a half dozen speaker cards.
Okay.
Kit Wood.
Again, it's for the first two subjects, annexation and, and development agreement.
Yes, Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Cavalier, and members of the council. My name is Kit Wood, I am the superintendent of Mobile Elementary School District, and it's a pleasure to be here this evening, and with me I have two of our governing board members, governing board president Dolores Brown, and governing board member Patricia We've waited a while to get to this point of the evening. As you know, Mobile Elementary School District is located in the acreage that is being considered for annexation this evening. We are and have been a very small school district for many decades, right now we have 25 students. We also have 250 square acres of land, no, square miles of land in our school district, so land-wise, we are a large school district, student-wise, we are small, and we want to say a few words in support of the proposed annexation to the city of Goodyear. We've been working with Montage Now Holdings for over a year. Certainly, Mobile, the Mobile community has been happy and content to be small for many decades, and we also realize that change is on the way. We appreciate the cooperation, the collaboration that have come from Montage Holdings, and meeting with us, explaining to us the, the changes, getting our input and partnering with us as far as implementing these changes. We know that there are going to be many growth and opportunities for children, for young people, and for families with the development that is coming on board. We also anticipate and look forward to creating and developing our own partnerships with the city of Goodyear as we continue, and as we start, and continue to build schools, to build what we hope will be a world-class, top-notch school district in the Amaranth community and beyond that. So we just wanted to share a few words on behalf of our school district, our governing board, and our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Ryan Teal.
Wow, didn't expect to be up so quick. My name is Ryan Teal, and I'm a property owner in the Mobile area. I live at 11564 East Caribbean Lane in Scottsdale. I, I feel that we've, I've bought several pieces down there, and watched it grow, and worked with Montage on, on a few different occasions, and I think they're very capable, and I'm very happy with the progress I've done so far, and I want to say I'm all in favor of the annexation.
Thank you.
Next speaker, David McHenry.
Hello, Mayor Kavanaugh, and Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh, and Vice Mayor Cavalier, members of the council, thank you for your time, I'm also a property owner and have been for approximately 25 years down in the area, Mobile area, and very much in favor of the annexation, I've worked with, I've had many discussions with Montage, they've impressed me 100% as wonderful people, and I think they'll do a wonderful job of presenting a, a very good community down there for you. And I also want to thank the city of Goodyear for discovering us down there, we've been very impressed and very surprised, and 25 years ago, when you were down there, it just didn't look like anybody would ever discover us, but I think that, I think you'll be very proud of, of the eventual community down there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Joseph McHenry.
I also own property down there, Mayor Kavanaugh and the council, I've owned property for the same time, David is my son, as a matter of fact, so we collectively went down there and bought property years ago, and we're certainly happy to see this coming about at this time. And I, I think the area down there is such a beautiful area that any resident that, that moves down there will be very happy to be there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ross Babcock.
Ross Babcock, from 1215 East Northern Phoenix, Arizona, I thank you, Mayor and council. I likewise am a property owner in the, in the Sonora Valley area, and I'm really happy to see things developing, I think that this should be a blessing both to Goodyear and to the property owners in that area, and it does tie things together, it provides a corridor, corridor that you don't have to front money for, which is always a good idea, and it will provide infrastructure that will be self-paying, which is, from Goodyear's standpoint, I would, it would occur to me as a tremendous benefit, and will, I can see it as a win-win for both north and south here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last speaker card is Linda Frelick.
Good evening, Mayor Kavanaugh and, and council members, my name is Linda Frelick. I had the privilege of meeting somebody the other day, two people in fact, that lived in another development of Montage, and they were telling me they went on and on and on about the wonderful golf courses that they developed, this and that. With that in view, I welcome them as being a neighbor of ours, and I hope that will happen real soon.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, why don't we discuss this for a bit, and see if, before we talk about the annexation agreement, see if we can agree that we want to have a development agreement? Okay? Maybe everybody's much more confident than I am right now. I saw a lot of 500 permits out there, though. Hey, council member Antoniak, you do?
I'm getting my thoughts together here, but I think on some, some of these issues, the questions actually were, were answered, as it relates, I did, I did note during the presentation, on the fire side of things, sorry, I'm looking for Harvey, where'd you go? Was it eight fireperson, my timer up?
Would you like to read out the ordinance first?
Not yet.
It was eight fire personnel, you reviewed that real?
The interim.
Yeah, the interim, talk, talk a little bit more about that, and as it compares to adequate staffing and where we're at right now.
Let Mark do that.
You know, was it, yeah, were you discussing FTEs when you were talking about that, were you talking about total personnel involved?
Harvey, can you go back to that point?
Mr. Mayor, councilman Antoniak just-
Yeah, that. When you talk about 24-hour fire and EMT coverage, overtime for six qualified firefighters initially, up to 12 months, until city hires eight EMT qualified firefighters plus funding for battalion chief.
The, the staffing plan that's articulated in the development agreement is attempting to provide for two firefighters on duty 24/7. To accomplish that initially through overtime, what we're indicating is, every day we'll have two people there on overtime. Until such time as we can hire additional staff and not utilize overtime. To get six, we ask for eight to accommodate leave and other scheduled absences. The service level there, as we discussed in our early conversations with the developer, would acknowledge that we are moving into a very rural area, and we're providing a level of service that's somewhat commensurate to that rural service delivery. And we also acknowledge that the developer plans to change the rural character of that quite quickly, and we would mutually agree on a level of service at a later time that would begin to materialize and look more like the service level that we have provided and continue to use as a service model here in the city of Goodyear currently, in our more urbanized areas. So accommodate that, for their need for speed, we kind of had to quickly agree on what that interim service level would look like, and agree to agree at a later date on what that'll look like. So to meet their requirements, we were able to define that. We, we really find ourselves, use of overtime is not necessarily desirable, but that's what we need to do, take annexation, we've got new citizens in about 30 days, we've got to put resources out there to meet our obligation to them at that point in time. And that's, that's the way to, that we are approaching it from the interim staffing that you see articulated here.
So you're talking about two firefighters down, manning the station?
Yes, sir.
So, if you have to-
Per shift.
Per shift, right, so a total of six, but if you have, if you have to fight a fire, OSHA rules are going to dictate that you're defensive on that fire right away, you can't go inside with two.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct, we are not going to be able to provide full level of service in that area with respect to structural firefighting because of our, because of our legal requirements, quite honestly.
Right, well, yeah, you can't-
We recognize that, and we're trying to do things that are smart with respect to developing relationships to hasten our ability to get mutual aid from service providers. We're, we're already working on establishing those relationships, and within the development agreement, it articulates at a certain point in time, that service level begins to increase.
Right.
And so-
But I mean, you're talking a 12 to 18 month, maybe even 20 more, four-month period, where there's two people, very, I mean, obviously very well-qualified EMT firefighters down there.
Our approach would be to try to provide for advanced life support, our discussions with some of the surrounding jurisdictions, and also in Pinell County, we initially had, had anticipated going in with less equipment and apparatus, the existence of Highway 238, and people that are already living in the community down there, the proposed community, necessitated us to rethink that, and so we have a little bit more of an equipment contingency, our ability to provide for extrication for vehicle emergencies and accidents on the highway, our ability to fight some limited non-structural firefighting efforts, we will have that day one.
Why don't we stick with fire?
Yeah, well, just, yeah.
Other people may have questions on fire, too.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you see my concern, I mean, that's, it's not in a firefighter's nature to show up at a house and not run into that house, you know, and so that's, that's what we're talking about here, and I want to make sure, I mean, anybody builds a structure down there, are we providing for provisions, that they sign off on that, that they know about that, that they're fully aware of that, if there's, I mean, if we're still at two, and we're still in somewhat that rural character?
I think, I think what we mutually acknowledge is the fact that there is no organized fire protection serving this community. And the day we're out there, we're providing a higher level of service, they are receiving a higher level of safety, certainly not what you and I would perhaps say is sufficient, but it's a starting point, mutually agree on, we build from there.
How about the morale of the six people that you're going to send down there?
Pardon me?
How about the morale?
You know, we've had dialogue with our labor group, and, and, you know, my conversation with them is candid, nobody's asking me whether this annexation is a good idea or not, I'm just, we're, we're here to prepare for it. If the city council says that's in the city of Goodyear, then our job is to serve it, and we'll figure out ways to do that, and we'll ask you assistance in helping us do that.
But that didn't answer my question.
Is this volunteerism? Is it, is it going to be volunteer-
You're going to have six people who live in Goodyear, as we understand it today, traveling every 24 hours to Mobile, right?
That was good.
It's, it's daunting, and we certainly are doing our best through leadership to, to make the best of that situation, and Goodyear firefighters will respond.
And you're, and you're recommending this?
This, this, this method of support?
Yes, sir, I think, I think this makes a lot of sense, I think it's a way for us to incrementally get there, I'll tell you, the requirements, particularly mutually shared requirements- I'll tell you, the requirements, particularly the mutually shared requirements for police and fire telecommunications, is very daunting. It's going to require a great deal of effort on our parts to provide that minimal level of service. I can't put firefighters down there if I can't talk to them. And that's my biggest challenge, to make this all go. And that's, we are still trying to figure out how to make that work. We're getting a lot of cooperation from our partners to make that go. But that's the big challenge for us right now.
One last question. Does Maricopa currently provide, do they even have fire service in the City of Maricopa or town?
The City of Maricopa currently does not have fire protection services. There's a fire district that is roughly contiguous with, not quite yet, they're working on through annexation, to have the fire district and the City of Maricopa's corporate boundaries become identical. There is an agreement and all of the political and legal requirements to transition that fire district to the city for a municipal operation have already been secured. It will occur. My understanding is it is date uncertain due to some required annexations that continue to have to be secured, but it is potentially as soon as fiscal one, July one. So they will have a municipal fire department at that time.
And that district, assuming it's, assuming it is a district today, they respond to mobile issues, is that right?
They have responded out there.
Okay.
But there is no one that has responsibility or takes responsibility for responding to that part of Maricopa County.
Councilmember Susan?
Thank you. How do you propose housing for...
The developer has already ordered housing in temporary configuration. And we don't know if they'll be there early enough, so we're trying to secure other arrangements on a temporary basis and interim until their interim facility arrives, which we're needing to provide for that. So we're already in those dialogues now, trying to determine how we're going to get that done.
And one of them to be happy in housing, that's my concern.
Yeah.
Well, I suppose the overtime doesn't hurt. Does that mean okay? Am I assuming that's a stimulation, the overtime?
Well, it's your time. I mean, it's your...
Well, the year.
I'm just questioning, is that what that overtime means? Is that going to get more money?
We're going to take firefighters on their normal day off. They're going to work out there. They'll be paid overtime. Developer will compensate the city for those expenses.
That's a stimulation.
Well, in the interim.
We'll tell you, there is such thing as having too much overtime.
I agree.
I've experienced in that period.
It could ever worse.
Yes, sir, it's a concern.
You're talking about, you're talking about one of your men or women leaving a 24-hour shift, getting in their car, driving an hour south and working another 24 and then coming home. Obviously, they're probably not going to be up at 3:00 in the morning down, down south.
We don't anticipate the activities out there to be a factor, but it's not to say that their first 24 hours won't be a stand-up 24.
Exactly.
So it is, it is an issue.
Mutual aid partners, you've had discussion with mutual aid partners about this arrangement, I assume, and the telecommunications?
Started dialogue with the tribal nation of Lakchin.
And mutual aid?
They're open, they're very close to the Pinell-Maricopa County line. We currently have, through the countywide mutual aid agreement, mutual aid with the town of Gilibam. The City of Maricopa and the Fire District of Maricopa, because of their mid-transition, we are currently in dialogue with both of them, and they seem open to mutual aid.
Further talk or discussion comments about fire, sir?
Well, I'm concerned about our own people and their shifts. And if this does take 12 months to get worked out, I'm concerned about that. And how it will affect our own employees for the next 12 months, you know?
We are evaluating strategies to try to compress the recruitment and the training process to see if we can address Sonoran Valley in perhaps a new and different way so that we can compress that time and get out with new staffing quicker than our normal model. We're exploring every path to try to get to the service model that's articulated there in that agreement as fast as possible.
Did you consider helicopter transport?
It's come up. We also are talking with the ambulance providers. We're discussing what they might do to assist the City of Goodyear in this particular instance. Ambulance service is open those dialogues, we're having those as we speak. Helicopter, no doubt part of our strategy is to pre-position landing sites and things of that nature.
Okay, further discussion on the annexation and development agreement.
Is that the only point? Am I the only one bringing points?
You mean other than the fire?
Yeah.
Just fire?
No, 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 the whole thing.
Okay. I have a question on the term of the agreement is 30 years. There's an option of two tenure extensions, which requires state council approval. Would someone tell me what that means?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the term, basically, the rights and benefits of the development agreement will go for 30 years. All of the agreements in here extend for 30 years. And if it's mutually agreeable to extend it for a couple of 10-year periods, then it would need to be approved by the council. Is that...
But does it tie us down to anything in particular? Or are we open to make changes in our agreement with Montage?
Mayor, Council, there's, I mean, over a 30-year period, I mean, things will change. The market will change. There's provisions in the agreement to provide for major and minor amendments to the PAD. So major amendments being council-approved and minors being standard.
That's all.
I have a question. I don't understand development agreements a whole lot, but in a business scenario, most businesses have an exit strategy.
Exit strategy.
So if Montage exits, what's our strategy as a city? So I'm sorry to say that in a modern sense. You know, I mean, the, you know, what consideration has the city done that, okay, this is Plan B. If Plan A doesn't, as you said, the marriage, if there's a divorce, what's, we have the kids, so...
Yeah. Well, Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, the development agreement is a contract between two parties. And there's good faith on both sides. There aren't any guarantees with a development agreement. When the city annexes property, we're pretty much in the forever business. So when we annex it, it's forever. The state law allows for some de-annexation and annexation, but it has to be de-annexed to another city. It can't be de-annexed to the county. So when the mayor and council de-annexes it, it's ours.
Which I understand, I guess my point is, say, three years down, two and a half years from now, that road is still not built, which is really huge on my part. I just want to see that done. And I don't like the satellite city concept, it doesn't, doesn't agree with me. But say, just something happened, the economy fell, and we still have those citizens over there. I guess, in my mind, I would think that there's got to be little folders sitting somewhere that if this happens, okay, we know that as a city, we want that road finished, or we know as a city that, I just, you know, I'm just looking at the future. If those situations came, and maybe this is not something others worry about or think about, but that's things that I do. And so you may not have an answer for me to that.
Shall we, Mayor, Councilman, that woman, Osborne, thank you for the question. I think it's a valid one, and it's in everybody's mind. It's something that came up very early on in this process and something you as decision-makers for the city, the citizens of Goodyear, really need to undertake. And there are multiple components to that. But one is, what does the additional zoning, what does the additional requirement for service require? And what we've done is really gone beyond the norm relative to providing for picking up the shortfall, so the city doesn't have to take as much risk as other municipalities have in the past. As we move forward, it's going to be very, very important that, in order to support that, that we can move expeditiously. And as to the road, there's nothing more important for the success of that site. And what the staff has agreed to do with us is work jointly on those items that are most important so that we can move those forward. The first is the road, the second is the sewer plant, water distribution systems, and getting started on the site grading so that we can start the school as early as the next eight months. We're already, the state has already approved the funds for the school building. There's a lot that's underway. If all of that were to turn upside down, I don't think that there is an answer. I think what you have to do is you have to look to the credibility of the developer, the financial backing or the partners of the developer. You know, tonight, we're talking about Montage Holdings, and we're really the management and the local people on the spot for a much larger partnership. Warehouser is our equity investor, and they have alongside of them Calpers, one of the larger financial institutions out of California that have committed substantial sums, and a lender that is not a regulated lender, so we won't have the FSLIC coming in and making some judgments as to whether or not an SNL can withstand the financial challenges of the future. The reason I mention those names is because Warehouser is involved in the ownership of multiple homebuilding companies. They understand the cycles that take place in homebuilding. They also grow trees for a living.
It's going to say they're kind of wood. Build your house, of course they're invested.
It takes time for trees to grow, and they have patience. What I like personally about Warehouser is that their management has been in place for quite some time. They have had a team of senior managers in place that I've known for many, many years, and we've created a relationship over those years. So there is, as was earlier mentioned by Harvey, a lot of good faith in between the parties. We have a lot of faith that many of the very rigorous standards that we have to meet are going to be reasonably judged, and we can work together with the City of Goodyear. Vice versa, I think the City of Goodyear has the right to ask the questions that you're asking tonight. I think it's very valid. I don't think that there's any developer that can stand before you and make the guarantees that would take away all risk. It just unfortunately isn't something that's possible given world events.
You know, this brings up a good point, though.
Please.
If something should go south on Montage, the City of Goodyear's quality of life would change and be reduced dramatically, because we would now have to afford a community of people, maybe 1,000 people, that would be tremendous logistical cost to us. One thing we should do, I hope we have, is that we have our finance people verify the financial agreements that Montage has, so that our safety during this process is unquestioned, that Montage and Warehouser have an agreement that assures the protection of the City of Goodyear over the next, how many years? Quite a few. Because if there's a problem, people of Goodyear are going to suffer.
Are you saying agreement or reserve?
I, it could be, I don't know what the agreement would entail, but it could entail reserves. It could also entail contingencies that if something, there is a problem, that one of them can get out of the agreement. We don't know that. And although I trust you, that doesn't do anything for the citizens. Seems like we should have some finance expert come to us and say, this is an agreement which you can rely on, that you're protected for the next 10 years or something.
Maybe a lot of reserve.
Well, I don't know.
It sits there, that you have...
Yeah, that's one form of, an element in an agreement. But it's the agreements themselves and how foolproof are they? That if something does go wrong, that we aren't going to, we aren't going to be the one with the problem that has to be solved.
Because we've had that happen a couple of times.
And this, no, this would be huge.
This would be huge.
This is bigger, this is a bigger problem than Anthem and Verrado. I mean, this is a challenge, this thing, I'll tell you.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
There's no access down there. And when there is, it'll be a two-lane road. This isn't I-17 or I-10.
I went on my quad.
Anyway, have we done that?
Mr. Mayor, may I address your...
Yes.
I appreciate the comments, and I think they're very valid. And we would pledge to work with staff to walk through our agreements. When we went through this process, we brought the investors to Goodyear. I thought it was very, very important for us to have a presence here. There isn't a vehicle today to provide a guarantee to the City of Goodyear that for the billions of dollars over the next 30 years that will be invested for infrastructure, that those will all be done. Much of that will be driven off of the market. And that's why I think it's critical that your partners in development of this property, or frankly, any property that you might be developing in the community, be backed by substantial folks. I think it's a wonderful thing for us to have New Hall as owners and developers of the Estraya property up north. They have wonderful credibility, and in fact, one of the same investors who's involved with Warehouser, which is Calpers, is also an investor in that property as well. So much of the same dependency that you have on Estraya, you would have in our partnership as well. And our books are open, our partnership agreements are open for review.
Well, that's what we need to see, that...
I'm happy to make that a contingency in this process.
That your financial resources are committed contractually to the success of this operation.
It's also important to understand that each of the infrastructural items that we're constructing will be financed differently. And there's not a pot of cash that everybody just dips into if and when it's needed. Each of the items is something that gets financed individually. The road will be financed differently than the sewer plant, which is very common throughout, and it's quite common in municipalities as well. So there's no one single answer. It's a fairly detailed issue. And again, I feel very comfortable with the progress we've made with staff in each of these areas. And our goal is to break ground and have the financing for each of these items done upon the completion of the engineering of each of these items. The first step tonight is we have to know that we can agree with each other that before we start thinking about what the cost of a sewer plant is, we have to know what we're providing a sewer plant for. And so this is the first step in a multi-step process, which we appreciate.
Can we move ahead with a, yeah, read the resolution?
Do you have another one, Ron?
I do, I'm going to ask. On the major and minor, two more points. On the major and minor amendments, is this similar to what our general plan, major and minor amendment language is?
Harvey?
Mayor, Councilmember Antoniak, the major and minor amendments for the general plan, this, the development agreement relates to the PAD, so it's a major and minor amendment to the PAD document, not the general plan.
Oh, I know, but does the language mimic it in essence? Is it, yeah, I didn't like...
No, the, no, it's different. We, by development agreement, we're creating the general parameters for what we consider minor amendments versus major amendments. And in all of the development agreements we've done with most of the master plan communities, we have similar provisions. Usually, there's latitude. Usually, if you're, if you're moving densities around from parcel to parcel, usually are changing the configuration... changing the configuration of parcels, usually, that's a minor amendment administrative. But if you're changing land use from commercial to residential or vice versa, that's a major amendment, has to go through a public process. Or if you're changing the circulation system, that's a major amendment. So, it's somewhat reason and subjectivity to what, but there's some parameters for what a major and minor amendment is. Is that...
I think so. On the, along the same lines on the amendments, you talk about, both in Section 44, you address amendment and I look at, and then you have Section 51 Administrative Appeal and I kind of look at somewhat similar actions. The amendments after they come to, sorry, minor amendments sought by master developer, they will be reviewed and approved by the city's community development director, that would be you, Harvey, in this case. All other amendments sought by the master developer shall be reviewed by the city's community development director and approved by the city council party to become ineffective. Then, when we talk about administrative appeal, if there's any disagreement, administrative decision authorized by disagreement, it goes to the city manager, I suppose, but...
Yes, typically.
Is that, is that pretty typical in all of our, all of our agreements?
Yes, it's generally, generally due process, administrative due process to be able to, if there's a disagreement, usually, you work your way through the organization.
So, if you disagree with the developer on what a minor and a major amendment is, that's going to go to the city manager to decide what's minor and major?
I believe so. Is that correct, Rourke? Is that, I believe that's correct. We talked about, just briefly, we talked about that in negotiations and while, you know, people changed.
I was going to say, negotiations are great, but this thing's going to outlive my time in this city.
Right, and, exactly. And my predecessor, they may not get along with my predecessor and so, maybe, maybe they need to have some administrative appeal. So, we specifically talked about an appeal procedure if they don't get along with the community development director. And they pointed out that if they probably didn't get along with the community development director, probably wouldn't get along with the city manager either, so, but anyway, but it would provide for the city manager, it'd go to the city manager.
That's the girl.
I believe that, it does go to the city manager. That's generally how it works.
I guess I was trying to understand the difference between administrative and policy and once you adopt this, does it all become administrative and then all the, all the burden is on whoever's sitting in your seat? Quite frankly, I don't want a zoning decision being made in the manager's office or a zoning decision being made here. Amendment decision being...
And I'm trying to, I'm trying to, I'm juggling with that. I would, Mayor, Councilmember...
Zoning would come to us, yeah.
Yeah, zoning. I would make it, I would make a determination whether it's minor or major based upon these parameters. So, I would make a determination. So, if I, for instance, I say it's major, they say it's minor, and we have, sorry, sorry for that. I couldn't help myself. And so, they would, they would appeal that administrative decision to the mayor, to the, the city manager to make a determination. So, if he agrees, agrees with me, it's major, it would go to you. If he reverses that, it would be approved by the administratively.
But that's not any unusual, we do. Is this the same thing we do?
It's the first time we've dealt with 10,000 acres 20 miles from the city, so I'm asking questions.
I realize the magnitude of this, but I'm just saying, it's the process, it's the same.
No, 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 I know. Hey, we get the development agreement on a Thursday.
Two more questions before we resolve. Did you find out if finance has reviewed the financial well-being of the contractor of the developer with his...
Staff review, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff review is not of sufficient detail to say absolutely yes. The financial health and well-being of this entity meets the standard that we believe that you guys are asking for this evening. We just posed a question to the applicant and our attorney has suggested language that might address that particular need and still permit you to move forward.
Thank you.
With your permission, drop some language into the ordinance in the resolution that makes the approvals pending the subsequent staff approval or confirmation of the financial assurances or financial capacity of the applicant, if that meets your satisfaction. We'll make another run at the financials in the next week or two. These don't go into effect for 30 days.
Okay.
If that, if that works.
And important thing is the contracts which they have with their financial resources.
Right.
And the commitment there, too. Okay, great. And then the last thing is, the southernmost part of the original 95 did not agree to the annexation.
Correct.
Does that in any way preclude us long-term from heading further south towards 8?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe the answer is no. No difference than, we have had conversation with Waste Management, being one of those parcels that has asked not to be annexed immediately, that through conversation with them, we may very well be in front of you very soon with similar kinds of development agreement, annexation provisions to accomplish the same thing. For the property owners to the south, there are people further south beyond the area contemplated that have expressed an interest in working with us and moving that strategy forward. So, in concert with those folks, in concert with the people that chose not to join at this time for various reasons, we would be working with those individuals. As infrastructure gets built, I think that you will find that a number of people will have great interests to want to...
That's probably true.
...make advantage of the infrastructure and the benefit of joining the infrastructure is a continued policy the council has that if you're not in the city limits, you don't get served by the infrastructure, therefore, it becomes very costly for them to remain in the county.
And it's all the way to Mexico border.
You can stay all the way to Mexico.
Mexico City.
Mexico border.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just want to repeat something so that everyone knows the detail. In the presentation, it was outlined that we didn't force a particular property owner, that's why there's one little jagged edge, but that was to accommodate a specific property owner, not the bulk of the property. There was a second reason for shortening it. And one thing that we've done is we have been very, very careful in reviewing the legislation so that if this annexation takes place, there can never be any question or claim with the way it was done. There was the potential with the mathematical equations in the legislation that someone could determine that we shouldn't have gone as far south. So, we brought the southern line up as far north to be completely conservative as possible and there's a large portion of which was left off of the annexation was done specifically for that purpose and not because some people did or did not want to be a part of the annexation.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then, could I ask, we're talking now about the annexation ordinance. Could I ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please?
Ordinance 07-1063, extending and increasing the corporate limits at the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona pursuant to the provisions of Title IX, Chapter IV, Article VII, Arizona Revised Statutes and Amendments thereto by annexing 42,780 acres of land known as the Sonoran Valley, generally located south of the Patterson Road alignment, east of the Sonoran Desert National Monument, west of the Maricopa-Pinnell County Line, and approximately four miles south of State Route 238 in Maricopa County, and providing city zoning designations of agricultural, agricultural urban, and general commercial.
Could I have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 07-1063, it's read by the county clerk, no, this is secret.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, can we add an amendment to that motion?
Yes.
Need to add a, I think, Section 6 to the ordinance and say this approval is potential subsequent staff confirmation of sufficient financial resources.
Okay?
Okay. Are we doing the annexation or development agreement right now? Could you read the annexation?
We're on the annexation.
You just read 1063.
1063.
1063.
That's the annexation.
Annexation, we got to do that first.
Should be, that should be on the deal.
It should really be in the development agreement. Should, okay.
Same provision in both.
Okay, same provision in both. Do you agree?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, that's been added to the motion. I don't know who seconded the motion.
I did.
Okay, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, a motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier and a second from Councilmember Holland.
I ask these guys.
They just, he talked to them.
No, I, but they're, they're, they were thinking development agreement. They're not thinking...
Get the candy back there and get some more candy.
He's eaten enough for another hour, Ron.
It's a good thing I said to him.
Julian.
Yeah, it's right.
Is this because you came on the... She's a jinx.
Mr. Mayor, I've spoken to the applicant about that provision and their preference is that it be in one or the other and they're asking for it to be in the development agreement provision.
Okay.
It should be in the development, that's what should...
The reason for that, I mean, just, I'd like to question the reason for it, so we understand. Okay.
Mr. Mayor and Council, there, there's potential that somebody somewhere along the line could question the annexation process and if the condition is actually met, we wouldn't want there to be a question as to when the annexation took place, if it was after the condition or upon the vote this evening. So, if, if it's okay with the council, our suggestion, but it's the attorney's call and we're willing to live with whatever the city would like.
City would like any...
He has a valid point as far as your calculation.
I honestly don't know the answer, so I don't think it's real. You calculate your referendum period 30 days, you have 30 days from the effective date. His concern is, is when do you start calculating that 30-day period? Is it when the condition is satisfied, which could be seven days, 14 days, 21 days from now? Or do you start tonight when we approve this annexation ordinance? So, that's his concern. It's a valid point. I'm not sure when you start calculating that. So, if it ties to the development agreement, then that's a little bit safer for them.
I think it fully protects us.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I think it's a development agreement.
Okay, so why don't I just ask for a motion again? Can I do that?
They got to withdraw their motion.
Would you roll your motion?
Okay, I'll withdraw.
Second withdrawal?
Yes.
Okay, could I have a motion then, Frank, on the...
To just develop the...
Annexation ordinance, yes.
Just the way it's written?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 07-1063 as stated by the city clerk.
I have a motion for Vice Mayor Cavalier and a second from Councilmember Holland. Any further discussion? Could I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay, now I'm going to go into the development agreement. Shall we incorporate your statement, Rourke, and how about this?
It's going to be the same, it'll be number six.
How about this, each, each, Vice Mayor?
Oh, they're already in.
They are?
They are in the draft that we prepared.
All this?
Yes, we, that's why we were gone earlier.
Why, I mean, you see, these are amendments to the draft we had in front of us. You've already...
Right.
So, the official copy has those in.
Okay.
Right, okay. Okay. Could I ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only on the development agreement?
Resolution 07-1135, approving a master development agreement with Sonoran Valley Management LLC, a Delaware limited liability company regarding the infrastructure requirements, services, and facilities to facilitate the development of 10,094 acres generally located south of Patterson Road, north of Papago Road, east of the Sonoran Desert National Monument, and west of the Maricopa-Pinnell County Line, and providing for an effective date contingent upon the attorney's remarks.
Do I need to read those, then?
Yes.
I'd have you, Section 5, that the approval is contingent upon the subsequent staff confirmation of sufficient financial resources of the master developer.
Okay, could I have a motion?
Yes, sir.
Would the council adopt resolution number 07-1135, just read by the city clerk?
Second that with the understanding that the revisions we were presented in writing are in the final document.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Sousa and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Discussion? Roll call vote?
Council?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
I gotta, I gotta bring it up and I know the fire chief's left, but, or maybe he didn't, but the morale issue, the morale issue, I definitely want to hear back, hear reports back on how things are going. You know, I mean, it's, that's one that's, I'm cautiously optimistic about the development agreement.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Mayor of Kavanaugh.
Aye.
It's passed 7-0.
Okay, I've been asked to take a quick break here, so why don't we break till 10:10? Is that all right?
Yeah.
I just.
... This next slide shows the additional development units two through six, shows the land use designation. So you can see there's a variety of residential, industrial, commercial designations. And the preliminary PAD will adhere to development standards as designed and designated in future final PADS that will come through the planning commission and the city council. Just wanna make the council aware, proper notification is being provided to future homeowners in stipulations. We do need to revise one of the stipulations. We will transmit this information to the city clerk, but in, for the state lands, stipulation six and seven are in regards to the waste management notification. We do need to add waste management of Arizona to the waiver notice provision. We need to add that, that sentence again later on in that specific stipulation number six. We, we included a notification, but then we, we forgot to add them again for the second portion of the stipulation. So we will make that addition and give that information to the clerk. Moving on to the final PAD, you can see that the six hundred and ninety acres is shown in yellow, you can see the proximity to the elementary school, to the Panout, Maricopa County Line, and to State Route 238. This exhibit here is the land use plan for the six hundred and ninety acre final PAD. As you can see here, the red represents the Village Center. There's a series of neighborhoods that are radiating outward from that. The Amaranth Area One Plan does include two school sites. Montage is working with the Mobile School District to relocate the existing Mobile Elementary School to one of these locations. And, and just real quickly, the red areas, we're calling this the Village Center, it will include a mix of residential and commercial uses, they'll be centered on public and gathering spaces. It will be a mixed-use area. As, as you continue outward, the core neighborhoods are in orange, they will have the highest densities in this area. The mid neighborhoods shown in, um, let me check this color. Mid neighborhoods will have signature streets, they'll have more, more open space directly adjacent to, to the units, more access to the, the regional open space. And then the edge neighborhoods, the areas that are adjacent to the BLM properties are planned around the perimeters of the communities so that those types of units can enjoy the desert and mountain views. So Amaranth Area One, approximately two thousand seven hundred homes, a hundred and seven acres of open space. We, we do need the council to know though that this is a very unique planned community. As such, a new set of standards are being proposed to accommodate this unique type of urban development. And staff has accepted these design standards, is shown in your final PAD booklet. The street network, for example, is a little bit different than, than Goodyear standard street sections. It was designed to provide a sequence of public spaces, the streets are designed to link pedestrians and the homes will front on streets. You'll see that there's not, there is a reduction in walls throughout this community. You'll note that all the small lots in Amaranth will be rear loaded, there will be alleys, so the garage component of the home is not in the front of the house. It will be located in the rear, so the greater attention will be given to the architecture of the homes. You've seen these exhibits before, showing the, the design of the open space and the homes fronting on the open space and the streets. Views of, of the Village Center, comparable views of the Rado Village Center. I already mentioned the, the garage moving to the back of the home, conceptual exhibits of single family and, and higher density residential development. With the plat, Montage has submitted a preliminary plat for phase one, which is everything south of the dotted line, two hundred and seventy-six acres, approximately seven hundred and thirty-six dwelling units. And similar notification and similar revision of the stipulation. Stipulation eight and nine, we need to revise the way we worded that to ensure proper, proper notification for waste management of Arizona. And this concludes the presentation. By staff, there's representatives from the state land department, we have Michelle Green with us, and we're all available for any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you Brett. We're doing the rezone of fifty-nine hundred and forty-three acres and a rezone of six hundred and ninety and then the preliminary plat. Comments from the applicant? Very quickly, Mr. Mayor, first of all, I wanna thank as, as a party to this, the state land department has, has moved very diligently and, and in fact, we can be assured that our state population is being well represented. They, they have done a great job in, in working with the city and moving things forward and I think Michelle has a great bit to do with that and we thank her. Secondly, I had forgotten to live up to something that I mentioned I would put on the public record for the sake of waste management. If and when we trade that, trade property and it's our intention to do that, we are not going to oppose their application to utilize that as a landfill site. That area will be a crucial area visually for the city of Goodyear and for us, for the entry to the Amaranth community. And so we'll be anxious to work with them on the details of what that looks like, but the above ground use as a landfill is something that we would not oppose at all. Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you, sir. Okay. Other comments from the applicant? Comments from the public? Okay, we'll start with the rezone of the fifty-nine hundred and forty-three acres. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only, please.
Ordinance 07-1064, providing for conditional rezoning of approximately five thousand nine hundred and forty-three acres in the Sonoran Valley Planning Area from the Rule 190, R90, R190, and Rule 43, R43 zoning districts to the preliminary planned area development zoning district, adopting supplementary zoning map number 07, oh, old three, to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Could I have a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance 07-1064 as read by the city clerk.
Say it. Motion from Councilmember Lord and a second from Vice Mayor Cavalier, open for discussion. Comments? Could I have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass seven zero.
Now, uh, move to the ordinance to rezone the six hundred and ninety acres. Ask the clerk to read that ordinance by title only.
Ordinance 07-1065, providing for conditional rezoning of approximately six hundred and ninety acres located at the north side of State Route 238, adjacent to the Pennell County Line from the Rule 190, R190, and Rule 43, R43 zoning districts to the final planned area development zoning district for a new community known as Amaranth Area One, adopting supplementary zoning map number 06, oh, one nine, to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Could I have a motion, please?
Mayor, move the council adopt ordinance number 07-1065 as read by the city clerk.
Second. A motion from Councilmember Susan, a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Discussion?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Community benefit, the developer will provide more affordable workforce housing opportunities to the city of Goodyear residents. What does that mean? I mean, the workforce housing, what, what, how does it benefit the city of, other than the residents in your area, which of course is the city of Goodyear, beyond that, how does it, how does workforce housing help any other part of the city? Do you need workforce housing down there? No, workforce housing is a term, it's a, it's, it's a, we're, we're really talking about a full range of housing prices, talking about entry level housing. So we're talking about housing that, that is, that is affordable by, for people buying their first house or, or somebody who is retired on a fixed income. The term workforce housing typically refers to some kind of a lower subsidized housing, but, you know, we're not, I don't think, gonna need the classic workforce housing because we're gonna have. Yeah, that's why I wondered why this is on here. Yeah, fireman teachers. So, so it's, it's a, it's, it's not a term that, that we've used, but it's a term that some cities are using. But it's, you know, it's a wide range of housing and, um.
It's not subsidized housing.
No.
It's workforce housing, there's a difference. It's not subsidized.
Yeah, it's so, it's so, when these people that go down there and have these early shifts decide to move down there, they're gonna be able to afford a house, so. Well, what I was getting at there was, uh, there will be work opportunity down there that you will need workforce housing for them. I know what workforce housing is. Okay. But you don't address any other housing and you address workforce housing. Is it, does it go up? No, absolutely. Our, our intent is to have a full range of housing. I, I think what happens is so much attention, it's paid, you know, to, can you really provide housing that's more affordable, we tend to maybe over talk about it. But we expect to get some very rich people living down there. Okay, well, as I say, you addressed one, but you didn't address the other end and I was surprised that nothing else was just workforce housing, but no other housing was addressed. It's not a big deal. Okay. And if, if you'll excuse me on that.
Well, Joseph, uh, it brings up a good question. I think the map that Brent showed, Brett showed was, he had, that the, we were talking about the zoning for the lower left, there it is.
Back up to a.
That, is that total six ninety? I mean, the, the. If you look at the whole thing, phase one and two, is that six ninety?
Yes.
Right. So the phase one is pretty high density stuff.
It's the higher density.
How about phase two? What do you expect it to come in at? I mean, is it gonna be?
Three and a half.
That Rick Chauvin you're talking about or?
Yes. The, the way it works is, is the higher density is closer to the Village Center and the lower density is on the desert edge and then there's a transition.
They're gonna have higher, larger lots.
Yes.
In the phase two.
Yes, yes. So this really addresses phase one? Yes, but the only reason that we phased these was just the production time to do the, the preliminary plat. The second, the preliminary plat for phase two has already been submitted and we're gonna do overlot grading and basically deal, deal with it as one development phase.
Cool, thank you. Okay. Okay, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass seven zero.
Okay, we'll move to the preliminary plat. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve our preliminary plat, the subdivision approximately two hundred and seventy-six acres into seven hundred and thirty-six lots and eighty-three tracks located at the north side of State Route 238 adjacent to the now county line for Amaranth Area One Phase One.
Aye, second.
Motion from Councilmember Antoniak and a second from Councilmember Lord, discussion on the preliminary plat. Seeing none, all in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it, seven zero. So, welcome to the city of Goodyear.
Yes.
Those who live in Mobile. And thank you for coming this evening. We have one more item on our agenda, if those, if you don't wanna hear about, about a performing arts center, it's time to leave. If you do, stick around. Okay, performing arts center.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's been a very long night. I'll try to keep my presentation brief, but I'll try to get out all the details. It's, it's an important subject, but I just, I know it's, it's been a long evening for everyone here. I'm here to talk to you about a potential performing arts center for the city of Goodyear. This is an important project for the city. It's one that we've symbolized its importance by including it in the city's capital improvement program. It's currently in the. It's currently in the, in the out years, which is unfunded, but it is, it is located there so that when funding becomes available, we can move it into, into the actual CIP. Recently, there has been discussion amongst private entities in the city about the possibility of partnering, or looking at how we can expedite the development of a, of a performing arts center in Goodyear through some kind of either public-private partnership, or, or through, or by a private entity. So, to address those desires that have recently come up, staff has looked into how we could, in addition to keeping the project in the CIP, what other methods we could utilize to expedite the development of a, of a performing arts center. Couple of options are at our disposal. First, we could go forward with some kind of a recruitment through an RFQ, RFP, and simply recruit for a performing arts center to be developed by a private entity on the city's forty acres, forty-acre portion of city center. The other option that is, that we have available would be to recruit for a performing arts center as part of the larger public recruitment process that we'll be going through for the full forty acres, and that has been discussed recently as part of the hub and spoke city center development process. Currently, we are, I'm proposing that second option, including a performing arts center as part of the full forty-acre development for a couple different reasons. First off, it ensures the continuity between a performing arts center and the other government buildings that would be part of, part of the forty acres, a city hall, potential library, perform arts center, and potentially whatever else may come out of the master planning effort that is currently underway. It would also help us to control the priorities with maintaining a city hall as the more important of the government, government facilities while still not losing the, the opportunity with the other, other buildings, including the performing arts center. And then, finally, it, it increases our, the city's leveraging capability because when we're using that entire quadrant and the design, or excuse me, the development rights associated with it, we have a greater leverage with a potential private party or private parties who might jointly be interested in providing the government buildings that we have interest in in exchange for developing around the remainder of the, of the forty acres. So, for those reasons, we believe it's, it's in our best interest to incorporate the performing arts center with the full forty-acre development, keeping in mind that if a private entity is not interested in pursuing that, or it's, it's not desired by the, the private parties out there, we can always pursue a separate development with solely a performing arts center, but at least we would then know that, that we gave it our best shot to include it with the full forty-acre development that we intend to pursue. That's my shotgun presentation as to the performing arts center and recommendations of staff. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Would you like to open it down to the public?
I have two speaker cards, Mr. Mayor, James Chapman and Ann Chapman.
Okay. Whichever sequence you'd like.
I'll give it a try here.
Okay.
Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice, Vice Mayor Cavalier, and councilmembers, thank you very much for this opportunity to visit tonight. I'm Jim Chapman. I reside in Goodyear, one-two-eight-two-five South, one-hundred-and-seventy-six Lane on the Straight Mountain Ranch, and I'm very interested in a performing arts center and support a performing arts center in the city of Goodyear. I've personally seen the positive effects that such a center can have on the community and the schools in the area, and the children in the area, and the strategic development and economic development that it can place on a community. I support the narrative that's been prepared by staff and applaud council efforts to proceed with the performing arts center and provide this civic amenity to the community. However, I am deeply concerned about the recommendation to tie the performing arts center to a development of the entire forty-acre site and the resultant year-long delay. If there is anything in the past year or two that we've learned, that, that time has taught us, it's that the costs on performing arts centers are escalating at a very rapid pace. West Valley Arts Council suffered, in their efforts to build a performing arts center, due to cost escalation. Surprise has halted their efforts to build a performing arts center because of cost escalation. The Straight Mountain Community College has eight million dollars plus in bond money to build a performing arts center and cannot proceed because of the cost escalation. It's beyond their abilities at this point. Interest rates continue to rise with a prime escalating two points in two thousand and five and one point, two points in two thousand and six. A single-point shift in interest rates can amount to millions of dollars over time on a facility that we're discussing. Overseas construction has had a direct impact over the past couple of years on material costs and availability here in Goodyear, and no one can credibly predict what those, that impact will be over the next period of time. Right now, construction costs are a known value, as are interest rates. A delay suggested by the timeline, suggested by staff exposes any potential developer to cost increases and potentially jeopardizes the project. Universities have expressed interest in a performing arts center. Some have even expressed a desire to join the complex and support of their course curriculum. It makes it nearly impossible for any developer to pursue partnering efforts or opportunities given the timeline and conditions to find an option B of the proposal. Performing arts center's always been part of the master plan for city center. I support the release of an RFP now to ensure timely completion of a performing arts center and concurrently pursuing the development of the balance of the site under a separate RFP. Need to understand and appreciate that releasing an RFP at this time does not commit the city to anything. It merely opens the door to the public process and allows people to submit proposals in which can be weighed on their own merits within the council. Any concerns for site plan or design continuity can be addressed through the Planning and Zoning Commission. I believe in a performing arts center for Goodyear. I wouldn't be here to deny if I didn't. We've been discussing the city center for a very long time, and I would encourage this council to proceed with the RFP on the performing arts center and realize some tangible and visible progress on the city center. Thank you very much.
I have a speaker card from Ann Chapman.
Aye. If you'd like, if that's okay, at this point.
Pardon me?
I'm Ann Chapman, and I live at one-two-eight-two-five, same place, and I just want to decline at this point, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No, you have to stand up there and talk. Any other comments from the public?
Mayor Kavanaugh, Vice Mayor Cavalier, members of the council. My name is David Jurness. I live at one-seven-five-nine-one, West Eastland Avenue in Goodyear and the Straight Mountain I am entirely in favor of somehow putting together a, a performing arts center that brings the kind of attention to Goodyear that I believe we really need on the side of the valley. I don't have an awful lot to say about it. I don't care how you get it done, but let's do whatever we can, please, to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Okay, I think we probably should discuss this before we have a motion, shouldn't we? Okay. Vice Mayor?
My thinking is, and I'm glad it's written up somewhat this way so that we have a clear understanding that we are looking for a performing arts center and, and the total city center. But what I'd like to see happen is to take A and B, to issue a request for qualification or proposal for a performing arts center, along with B without the performing arts center in it, so that you have these two going at the same time and requesting a bid at the same time where you could have someone like Mr. Chapman bid on, and do something on this one unit, and other people, he's not the only one, if anyone else would like to bid on that. So that that would, opportunity would be there for a bid for a justic performing arts center, and parallel that with the rest of the city center on what you plan to do with that. And I think by doing so, when this comes together, then they could be, the concentration of construction, the artistic design, the architectural design, all could come together at the same time, and the construction could come together at the same time. Because I think you'll find that you have, you have some people who will do a performing arts center and do it with no cost to the city or capital outlay, and no cost to the city for O and M, and this would be a site that would, that the city could use not only for performing arts, but for training, for staff training for the city. It would have to be dual-purpose, so that it doesn't sit there as a performing arts center by itself, which is very costly. But since it's, it would serve a dual-purpose, it would, it'd be worth looking into. Along with that, parallel that with the rest of the city center, and go after a partner in that area. And if you found one that wanted to do both, fine, but I think what we're looking at in the performing arts area is something that's going to be hard put to find, because I've found some people who have come to the city of Goodyear, looking at places to invest in development, and they don't see the two coming together as something that is affordable for them to undertake. They'd like to see one or the other, and then bring the two together in the end. And I, that's why I'd like to see us proceed in this.
And just to repeat, A and B, would you say that again?
Well, take A as written, and then B without the first, include the performing arts center. Take that out, and just put a proposal, a proposal process to establish a public-private partnership for the development of the entire forty-acre center, so forth. That excludes the city, excludes the performing arts section. But I think if, if it's possible that there are people that will do one or end the other, and if, if someone would come in and want to do the whole thing, that's fine too, but I think that's going to be very rare to find something like that.
Okay. Councilmember Osborne?
I'd, I'd like to wait and hear what I'd have said.
Okay.
I don't understand this quite yet, so I'd like to hear some of the opinions first.
Councilmember Lord? I'm sorry, I thought you...
Oh, no, I'm just...
My preference is B. You know, we've, we've, we've kind of decided to wait on the, on the city hall and the library and all that. We've kind of waited for the universities, and we talked about a performing arts, but we've tried to plan this in total. And I feel that this is more continuity, that we plan this in concert. And not to say we're not going to build a performing arts, or performance, performing city, give me the bird, I'm so tired. Thank you, performing arts center. But what I get this feeling of is number A is, there's somebody that wants to speed this process up, and make it be the leader over doing the library and doing the city hall. And for that reasoning, I feel B is, encompasses the, the whole quadrant, and it brings continuity to the architect, architecture. It is late, isn't it? So that's my position.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that a performing arts center is important to the city of Goodyear. There's no question about that. We've had a lot of failures in this area, unfortunately, but one of the things that I want to make sure is the importance of this facility that does not take preference over what is a desire of a majority of the people that have voted for a, a city center. I think that B accommodates the performing arts as after the fact of building or pushing forward the city center. City center, as Councilman Lord pointed out, has been taking, been taking a back seat because of the importance of the two projects that have been in the limelight in the city, and that was, of course, the Cactus League, Cleveland Indians Come to Town, and of course, the importance of the universities. And those were important venues for, for the city, in that the Cactus League provides tourism, and of course, the university provides educational opportunity for the youngsters who live within, and adults who live in, in the city of Goodyear. Well, I'm, I'm for B, and only because I, I want to see the city hall proceed and be accomplished with performing arts being a, a third part of this, this complex. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilor Allen?
You know, I'm, I've kind of, this has been kind of a difficult one because we do want to show our support for the city center and to make sure that everyone knows that we think it's important. But if someone, I'm looking at A, and I'm thinking, you know, if someone comes along and they have a really good deal for us, we would be crazy to just turn it down. So I really would like to hear what folks have to say, and maybe the way of doing that is to say, okay, we'll do A, and it, it can complement B as well. So I'm, I'm supporting what Vice Mayor Cavalier said, and, and maybe we find out what's out there and what somebody's willing to do for us, and maybe it's for free, and we don't have to sacrifice anything from the city center. And maybe it's not, so, but we would find out.
Okay. I'm stuck with competing, competing projects here in the sense that, you know, I look at fires, you know, we've got so many, so many things going in the city center, and so many things going throughout the city. We're talking about another RFP or another RFQ process and distraction from current event, you know, current things that are going on. You know, I don't want to look the gift horse in the mouth in the sense, but, you know, quite candidly, I, I feel like we're, if we go with A, we're, we're really, you know, we could put an RFP out on the street, but not, I don't think, is there any state law that precludes somebody from plopping a proposal on our desk tomorrow?
Unsolicited.
Yeah, I mean, what?
No, but you, recommendation is you do go through a public process because you want it to be competitive and make, in fairness, make it available to multiple parties. If you're going to be providing or contemplating any sort of public support and or land, that's kind of where the recommendation for an RFP of some sort, or some sort of public process comes from.
And when the city center master plan is, you've, status on that, you've received?
We've, we received, I believe, around ten to fifteen...
Eleven, I think.
Okay, eleven applicants, submittals, and staff is in the process of reviewing, screening, selecting, and the, the master planning effort will be underway shortly, and we're still maintaining late August, end of August as our completion date contingent upon actually, you know, when we, when the firm is selected, we've got to confirm that with them, but that's still our goal.
with them, but that's still our goal.
Just to have the master plan done in five months?
Correct. And the-
Two years, I guess, took your committee.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
No, no reflection on you.
We'll be using that, that area master plan as a basis, so that's why this can go a bit quicker. And the intention would be to weave in whatever public process I'm directed to pursue into the master planning so that it's to some degree of completion, but, but we bring in that private entity or entities so they can provide input into the process and not control it, but offer some more perspective so that when we get the finished product, it, it best reflects what the private entities can, can provide and are, are willing to provide.
And I'm, and, and I'm feeling like at that time, we might be able to do an RFP for the whole, the whole thing.
That is our intention, yes.
Okay, sorry, it's getting late.
No, it's okay.
You know, if I'm a private landholder and I'm holding 40 acres and time is not of the essence for me, I mean, well, which maybe that's the argument in this case, but if I can sit on land and master plan it and, you know, really, you know, put the heart and soul into it and, and move forward with kind of an overall look, I'd rather, I'm more comfortable doing that than cutting it up or discussing even cutting it up.
You only have one shot at this.
Yeah.
I only have one shot at this.
I'm torn, I'm torn on this because I, I think, like Frank has said, you know, it's, like, you kind of want to hear what people have to say, but at the same time, you know, I don't want people going off and having wishful thinking, so I, I'm leaning more towards B.
Jim, just to help me understand this a little bit, your letter C was that it would stay in the out-years of the CIP. So if this was, if we went with A or we went with B, does that mean that it comes out of the out-years of the CIP and then gets put into these years? Or how does that work?
Good question. It, oh, yes to half your, half your question. It would, upon successfully going through the, a public recruitment process, securing a private partner who's interested in the, in the performing arts center either as part of the whole thing or individually, then that would negate the need for the city to have a performing arts center in the CIP. We wouldn't need to develop it ourselves. So yes, later on, it could come out of the CIP. That doesn't necessarily hurt or help us because in the out-years, those are the unfunded years, so right now, no money is committed to it. It wouldn't free up any funding and it's not currently, in, in that portion, it's not competing with anything else. It's more like a placeholder.
I understand that, but I, I guess, you know, my point was, so if it now gets put into these years, then what's getting kicked out is, you know, that's what I don't quite understand.
Nothing, nothing would because-
Okay, but if, if it's only, if it's a private entity that's going to-
Exactly. So that would take, it would mean that the city was not having to spend the funds or, or do the work to get it done, so it would not have to compete with another CIP project currently.
But we are also talking about a public-private entity, which would then be, I see, okay.
And then we put money in.
I see. Well, I, I kind of lean towards B myself, actually.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'd certainly lean to A and B. I, I think we just can't risk missing that opportunity for A. This, an example that we've seen, which may or may not even be bid, would cost tens of millions of dollars to build, I'm sure. And I, I think, I would rather have B incorporate that as a known entity in B's planning than B try to determine what's the best thing for the city to do in designing or acquiring a, a performing arts studio. Because there's almost only one way we're going to get one of that quality and that's to go private funding. So we might do private-public in city hall or the library, or we don't, we don't know that. But we do know that the only way we're going to get, get a performing arts center of the quality that we want is private. And I just hate to miss that opportunity by placing that in the hands of some other organization to make that determination for us or recommend it for us. Why don't we just provide it to them that we had an RFQ process and this is the, the winner? You know, incorporate this winner in your plan. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, does too. What if we- What if we did a hybrid, I mean, we're talking about the, the city center plan being done in about August. I mean, if we did an extended RFP, like a 60 or 90-day timeline, just, I mean, we're talking about a unique situation here.
Yes.
I want to, pardon the term here, but bleed the best out of the best and, you know, this is, this is a, a unique, a very, very unique opportunity that I think requires a certain amount of time. And that's, that's my, that's probably one of my largest hangups here is, is if we put an RFP out on, on the street, I, I would not vote for this if I knew it was going to be a 21-day RFP. I just, it's, it's so, it's, it's such a unique thing and, and we've got municipalities in the East Valley that went after and did their own thing, public money and obviously they're, they're struggling in theirs. We've seen private establishments make a go at it. Again, very unique facility, but if, you know, if we're talking about certain components being included in this, you know, what, I, I feel like we need to be having the discussion about what, you know, what components do we want in it? What are the requirements of that? Or are we just saying, you know, RFP, public-private partnership, arts facility, period? I, I get that. I'm just, I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm feeling a lot more ambiguity about this process than I am definition.
Here's, here's what, in, in B, you would get an RFP out there and you would find that, you would find someone who would build our city center and we give them the private land that goes with it and they would have their own private land. However it's built, they, they would build, okay, and we say we want all these things built. We want the administration building built, we want the, the council chambers, city council chambers built, and we want the library built and we want the performing arts, performing arts center built. Okay, with some kind of an agreement, if they agree to that, in B, they come in and they do all of that and then they, and they get their piece so they can build their property. Now, we in turn have to go, and this is the most expensive part of this, not capital cost of building a performing arts center, but maintaining it from this day forward. This is a very expensive thing to maintain. I don't think the city can afford to maintain a performing arts center.
Suggesting so.
It's very expensive. The A allows this person to come in and do it in parallel so that it's built with the rest of the city center, but uses his capital. He comes in and we, we write it so it comes, it comes out that way, that he uses his capital, he builds it, and then he agrees to maintain it and manage it and do the whole thing so that the city is not responsible for any part of maintenance on that facility from this day forward over the whatever term we agree, 30-year or 50-year lease on the, on the property. Now, I don't see how you can miss on this to send out a, an RFQ or an RFP on something that's going to be this free. Other cities have tried to build it and other cities have failed because they can't afford to, number one, build it with capital, number two, maintain it once it's built. And there are some cities that have built this and have built these things. They cost $2 to $3 million a year to maintain.
And they have 10 times the population as we do.
Some of them have the same population and they, it's costing, City of Mesa is an example of one that has, you know, 10 times the population we have, and they're in trouble.
So what you're saying is that we're going to have a company that you feel is coming into Goodyear that is going to 100% fund this-
Build, yes.
And 100% take care of the maintenance and the operations of it.
Agreed with my case.
100%, and so that is what you're proposing?
And it will cost, probably cost the city a yearly fee, but nothing like the maintenance of having to hire maintenance people and to actually run it and to manage it, to bring in whatever you need to bring in to make it a, a, an effective entertainment center for our community.
So are you looking at a timeline?
Same timeline as B.
Same timeline, sorry, you saying that, that you, you can foresee that the city hall and that and the library is built in concert? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And is the reason that, that, that this issue A is so important is because there is someone out there that you definitely know is going to finance this?
Yes.
So you know, we still have to put the RF, the B, the process out.
But there might be someone else.
That's right.
Yeah, there may be.
Um, excuse me, the, the one thing that concerns me is that, that I get this feeling that this A timeline is going to be the, the biggest concern of anything to do with the city center. That in itself, that one lone entity is going to be built or, or taken right, I mean, that's the most important focus.
No.
And so I, I feature myself as a performing arts in the middle of a quadrant that we have not fully planned. I guess that's my theory.
I said, put A with B so that they come together and they grow together and they are constructed together.
So, so make the RFP due at such time that the master plan is finished and that's what B is.
See, that's what B is.
I don't see, yeah, I don't, I mean, establish the need, discuss the need, talk about, you know, I, and then-
But this one person could not bid, if we just go B, the person who wants to do the performing arts center can't bid on it because he can't bid on the other, I mean, he doesn't have that kind of capital to build the, the whole thing. He's interested in building just that, performing arts center and managing it.
What's wrong with that? Nothing, I suppose, but I just-
Do we find that sometimes when you do public partnerships that, so they come in and their focus, you know, their expertise, I, I look at the baseball stadium, how, how they brought different components in, the, the different companies worked together because one alone could not develop that to the degree that it needed to be. And so if you send, send this out, it doesn't preclude, does it, that, that another entity such as this performing arts-
No.
-financial group cannot pursue that with, with the team.
Basically, a team of developers? No, it does not preclude, preclude that at all.
But it doesn't assure it either.
No, correct.
I, I don't, I'll, I'll tell you, you know, go through the master, we go through the master plan, we have the master plan in front of us, we talk about the different puzzle pieces that are fitting in there. I don't necessarily have a problem having the discussion independently, you know, having four RFPs going for different facilities and public-private partnerships within the same 40 acres, as long as we've controlled the master plan, we haven't gotten one piece in front of the other and, and the cart before the horse. And so, you know, you asked me to put an RFP out on the street tonight for a performing arts center, that was option A, I'm telling you, no. B seems to be, you know, the, 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 the way we've been doing business as, as, I mean, or not the way we've been doing business, but the predictive route that we've been discussing for many years now. But, I mean, if you're talking about, you know, 90 days from now, you're going to have a consultant on board, the master plan's going to be underway, and you've got the puzzle pieces to find, but you haven't colored in the, you know, or you've got the pages of the coloring book to find, but you haven't colored, colored them in, you can, at that point, put an RFP out on the street for the four different pieces.
But, but this is going to be distinctive, this is not going to be a public construction, it's going to be a private construction. And what you're saying here is you're, you're taking this, this, this agreement that you've arranged with some private entity and you've agreed on what you're going to provide them in infrastructure-
You understand that.
...reimburseables and those sorts of things, and you take that package and you give it to this master developer and say, in your plan, you incorporate this. Where it goes exactly is up to you, but you incorporate this person or this entity to operate, to build and operate our performing arts center. And you do that and you design that, where it's going to be in concert with the other elements of that city center.
How in the world can, can one individual guarantee that this is going to be a success for him? When he's going to be in the performing arts, he's going to develop a return of his finances? And that's my concern. We're going to be giving him-
That's up to him to bid.
But we're going to be giving him the land to, to build the performing arts, okay? And you can't tell me for one minute that at some point in time, we're not going to get involved in O and M on this type of situation.
In what respect would you?
Well, some, I don't think, one, an individual is going to be able to carry it, this one you know.
You're saying there'd be cost to the city somehow?
Well, we don't need that information.
The city's going to pay a, a million dollar a year fee or something, that here, here's a million dollars, you operate it, you maintain it, you make the revenues from the use of the facility, i.e. they have shows, they get the revenue, not us. I, you know, that's how, yeah, they, if, if they aren't going to generate an income, they aren't going to do this, but they have to be able to generate revenue.
That's the whole idea, is to make money. And if, if they aren't making money, they, it's, it's obviously something that has been analyzed and has, has studied to the point that they feel it can be done. And worst-case scenario, they get it built and then it falls through and they can go, we've got a building that we didn't have to pay for.
And a big headache too.
Well, we were, we want a performing arts-
Citizens want a performing arts center.
No, I, I have never said, Mayor, that we didn't want one.
No, I know you haven't, but the headache is worth it, because people want it. You know, that's what they want.
They also want a library too, so we have a lot of wants in the city, but we haven't had opportunities. I guess it's the process that we're going through. I, I don't have, I don't have any heartburn with the building, I have a heartburn a little bit with the process, that's all.
Is there, is there, Mayor, is there a problem in continuing this a week or two and having staff come up with a hybrid language of A and B, specify the timelines and lay it all out and then-
I think Frank did that initially. He gave your, he combined them together and told you how to, how he was going to propose it.
What does B do for you that, that A doesn't? It, it says the same thing as far as timelines are concerned.
No, I'm sorry, maybe I'm missing something, I'm not necessarily seeing a timeline in either A or B.
No, there isn't a timeline either. What we're saying is for city staff to go ahead with the combination of the two.
Yeah, and you already, so you said it, let's exclude that sentence.
Yeah, and exclude the, the sentence, performing arts in, in B, but put A with it.
Public-private partnership will fill the entire.
I just hate to jeopardize losing this opportunity for private financing of a-
I agree.
-of a tremendous thing for the city of Goodyear.
This is not a risk for us to put out an RFP. I don't see a risk in it.
Yeah, what's, what's the risk of putting the RFP out? I don't understand that.
We can have a, we can have a motion.
Well, if that's, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that the council authorize staff to pursue development of a performing arts center through an open public process independent of the city center public-private partnership efforts while still working in conjunction and at the same time with the city center master plan currently under development so that the two are working simultaneously. So moved.
I'll second it.
Have a motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier in a second from Councilmember Holland. Further discussion?
I was going to say, I was, well, I won't say what I was on my mind, but that wasn't too bad.
You did say public-private.
Yes, I did.
What's the standard for a RFP? What's the standard for RFP timeline?
Um...
What did we do on the city center plan?
That, we're still developing that process, so it wasn't...
Open date versus deadline. We issued the RFP, and the deadline was...
You mean for the master plan?
Yeah.
Oh, that was a short term, I think that one was 21 days, just for the master plan itself, for the advertisement process. The reason option B was called out as a proposal process is that we're looking at it being a multiple, multiple layers of screening to get to the selected private developer. There potentially could be a qualification process, where you then screen down all interested applicants to some small number, two to four, and then potentially some kind of a proposal process on those two to four private entities to then select the preferreds. That's why it's potentially, that's why it's looked upon as being longer than just a straight, "Give me a proposal, I select who I like," or, "We select who we like, and we move on." We were looking at the importance of the city center being such that we wanted a more elaborate way of determining who would be the selected private partner. So that's a long-winded way of saying it might not be just a standard RFP or RFQ. Well, yes, it's, master planning is a professional service, a consultant you hire, the private partnership would be someone who's going to come in and develop the 40 acres or the performing arts center, you know, we're talking both elements right now, in exchange for development rights or whatever, you know, whatever assets that are of value in this process. So it's not the same type of process to select.
And the timeframe of somebody that, when the RFP goes out for the performing arts building, will still have control over the timing of it to coordinate with the rest of the quadrant?
Most definitely.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would hope that, Frank, but through this whole process in the last month or so, I've gotten the impression that it's a speed-up, that it's got to be done, and there's a date line on it. And that's, Mayor, that's where you're seeing my hesitation, because I have met with these entities, maybe not to the degree Frank has, but I have seen the briefings, and I've seen the amount of money it's going to cost the city, and I've seen all that. But what made me hesitate on this is that was, we've got to do this now, and I want this done by this date, and if it's not done by that date, we can't make it, we've got to book this. And so it was the presentation of this, hurry, 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 and, I'm sorry, we don't need to worry about the surrounding, this is what we're focusing on. There's my concern.
Yeah, that's a valid concern.
Okay. And that's where I'm coming from. It isn't that I don't want that built.
No, I know. Is there objection to making the RFP process, you know, no less than a 45-day process, such that it opens the door, it allows time for publicity? Trust me, I sit, we talk about these things in consulting world, day in and day out, and 21 days is a hell of a time to turn around an RFP. That's a, that's a, that's a quick turnaround time.
I don't understand the 21 days.
Yeah, what's...
21 days, from advertisement to due date for RFP.
If these people have that kind of money?
Yeah.
And you say you don't want to lose it, what is 30 days different? I mean, that's what I, see, that makes me nervous. That makes me nervous, oh, you got to have it, and if you don't, it's going to go away. Why is it going to go away in there?
But that isn't start-to-finish time in decision-making. That's for you to put something out.
That's for a team, no, that's for a team to, for a team to see an advertisement, decide they want to bid on the project, or propose on the project, rather, come up with a proposal that meets the desires, wants, wishes, and needs to their best of their ability?
Right.
And then drop that in City Hall within a 45-day period. If they do, if we do it in 21, and somebody comes up with a great idea on day 22, they've missed the deadline.
That's right. I go along with that.
So I'm saying, you know, I'm comfortable 45 to 60 day time period, and I'd like 45.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable. But it doesn't mean your decision is made in 45 days.
No, 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 no.
So you don't, you don't have a loss to do.
They're due, and then staff has to evaluate them and get them back to us.
No, I see your point, and that's a good point, because someone sees this and has some of the same ideas, but they're not, they can't put it together at that length.
But it makes me feel better.
Okay, then I would amend, I would offer up an amendment to the motion that would require a 45-day advertising deadline criteria for any RFQ or RFP, as it relates to...
Can I, can I make a clarifying request on that? Because I believe the vice mayor's suggestion was, did not say RFQ or RFQ, was proposal process, thus leaving that for staff to develop what that process will entail. So instead of saying RFQ or RFP, a 45-day minimum advertisement process for whatever recruitment is pursued, again, leaves that flexibility for us to come up with that desired process.
So you have to come back to us for that process?
Not unless you direct me to, I'm just saying, if you don't put me in that box, staff can come up with the process we feel is best.
You can't do it sooner, I don't understand.
But he's going to tell you what he can do.
All I heard was the 45-day minimum advertisement is what you're suggesting.
Right.
Which is fine.
Right, and I'm clarifying that it wouldn't be necessarily an RFQ or an RFP, your motion was for a proposal process, and so that leaves it wide open, and that's all I'm asking.
It's got to be one of the two.
It's got to be one of the two. I mean, that's, that's...
It's not the spirit of this conversation.
Yeah, exactly. So if you, if you need an amendment to the motion, I'll say RFQ/RFP process to run notes.
I'd rather not, only because we haven't determined what that process will be, if you wish to give us that direction and tell us what you want it to be, then we'll go in that direction.
Okay, what are the other options other than RFP and RFQ?
RFI and hybrids, as I was just describing a couple minutes ago, there could be a tiered process where it's an RFQ, and then it's an RFP with the same, you know, that screens it down and gets it to the next level, so...
RFI is not what we're looking for.
Yeah.
I think RFQ or RFP, and you decide, is that...
If that's how you'd like to state it, Mayor, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm not being, I mean, RFI is not necessarily what we're talking about.
Well, we did talk about colleges.
I want something definitive to discover.
Yes.
So can we, can we say, can we amend the motion then, to say, a public proposal process no less than 45 days? And then, I mean, it's, it's not...
Well, it's RFI.
If we want to go solid on RFQ, that's fine, I mean, an RFQ or RFP process not...
With that, and it's found to be inappropriate, you can advise us, but we want something fairly strong.
So, so my amendment would reflect an RFQ/RFP process to last no less than 45 days?
Yes.
Do I have a second on my amendment?
That would be good.
I have a motion from Councilmember Antonek in a second, from Vice Mayor Cavalier, is that correct? On the amended motion? Any discussion on the amended motion, 45 days for not...
Okay. Keep real exciting over here.
Okay, all those in favor of amended motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Amended motion is approved. Now we'll move to the motion, the primary motion is, on the original motion. All those in favor of that motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, any comments from council members on current issues?
Yeah, I do. Could you just, I had a constituent reproach me on the break after the BMX, and after we promised parts to young people about our senior citizens and what we don't do for them. So is there any way you could kind of give us a little paper on, what are we doing for our senior citizens? Do we help them find places to meet? Are we using the schools? Or what kind of programs do we have out there for them? I try to assure this citizen that he certainly, pardon? Yeah, and so, so I'm concerned, he was concerned, so could you just give us a little information on that, and see where we may need to be moving, what direction we need to be moving to help those people?
Okay.
And that segment of our population.
All right, and so that's an inquiry of staff, and I'll move to staff, city manager, on your update on council-related matters and results, any action items from today's meeting, other than what Councilmember Lloyd just mentioned.
Okay. Mayors and members of council, before I do that, I would like to introduce Jesse Susnaros, if you would stand up. He is now, next week will be the acting director for the IT department. You've seen him before, he also has a dual function, which is our OSHA compliance officer. Just want to place an...
Well, congratulations on the job.
As it relates to matters to be brought back to city council, staff to work on as a result of the CFD meeting, staff in the council will contact the 11 property owners regarding the status of their cases. As it relates to the regular agenda, items 7E and 7O were continued for staff to work on, the first one related to the fire station acquisition, the parcel, and the second one was related to a flat. Thirdly, a request was made to have conversation with the Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool to look at the liability and at what cost, as it relates to skate parks. Further, that we examine as a part of the skate park process, looking at double fines, what that means. As it relates to item HC, more tile or other materials on the other buildings, this is the public marketplace, and also to improve the freeway pylon sign design. As it relates to the discussion about Montage and Emery, that staff will review the various financial contracts that Montage has in place, and report back to the council regarding that. As it relates to the Emery area fire service, a question and a request was that we provide a report back on employee morale to the council on a, on a regular basis. Did I miss anything? I think I got them all. I think staff got them all for us.
Okay, thank you for the inquiries, inquiries of staff by council.
They're all having trouble, nobody.
Okay, this meeting's adjourned, thank you.